So just a quick update, Tom is out of town. He was gonna try and join by phone, but wasn't sure how his reception would be. And then Diane's gonna be half an hour late.
Okay. Looks like we have Erin and Richard and I, so I guess we have a quorum. I see it's 6:01, I'm sorry, I was running around, I just ran in the door, but I, I'm kind of organized here, let me just take 10 seconds to kind of figure out which agenda I'm looking at. That's not even for this meeting. July 21st, there we go. All right, all right, let me go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the July 21st Trinidad Planning Commission meeting. And we will start then with a roll call.
So Commissioner Kelly.
I'm here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hakinen.
Hello.
And then as I mentioned, Diane is going to be running late and Tom wasn't sure if he could make it, so we will wait.
Sorry, can you stop using the internet for a second?
I think that's Erin, not asking, I don't think he's asking us to stop using the internet. I think, I think he's trying to get bandwidth at his house, so let's let him sort that out, it looks like we just, he just dropped, so. There he is, Erin, can you hear us?
All right.
A little bit. Think you got a little bandwidth.
How about if I stop my video, could you?
Yeah, that does seem to be better.
I can't express that enough. All right, am I, are you guys able to hear me?
Yeah.
All right, let's try with video now, how's that?
Still good.
Good. Okay, all right, sorry.
Good.
Okay, so Commissioner Hakinen is here. So we're done with the roll call, approval of minutes, we have none this week, this month, I mean. Approval of the agenda, are there any changes, commissioners, that you'd like to make to the agenda? Or any, or anyone else? All right, Steve, sorry?
Move to approve.
Okay. Seconded? I know, I'm not sure we have to approve it, do we, the agenda? As I, or do we, anybody know? It doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt. All right, Erin, do you approve the agenda as well, do you say aye, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Richard gave a thumbs up, so we're good to go with the agenda. At this time, we open for items from the floor, allowing members of the public to spend three minutes to tell us about things that are not on tonight's agenda. So I'd like to go ahead and open to items from the floor, if there are any. Okay, I do not see any. Yeah, I don't see any items from the floor. So with that, I think we will go ahead and move into our agenda tonight. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the ADU ordinance, which is a continued discussion from prior meetings, and the STR ordinance, also a continued discussion and some decisions on the STR ordinance, so we'll just move right along. And I guess Trevor, I'll ask you to start, kick us off with the ADU staff report, if I may.
And just real quick, is that Tom that joined us by chance by phone? Maybe not.
So there is, yeah, the 707-845-5130, is that you, Tom?
Hello, yes.
Oh, excellent, okay. All right, thanks, we're just checking.
All right, thank you.
All right, so for this meeting, I have provided you with the development standards for ADUs. So that's a pretty big section, that's going to sort of round out the, the rest of the ordinance, although when we put it all together, we'll have some additional things to talk about. So we've already reviewed the regulations for JADUs and definitions at the first meeting, and then at the last meeting, we talked about the, the various procedural and permitting requirements. And so these are the development standards. And one of, I have some comments in the standards that I would like you to consider and provide feedback on. And then also, one of the procedural issues is that ADUs that meet all of these standards will be approved ministerially, meaning they don't go to public hearing, it's, it's kind of like a building permit where if they check all the boxes, then they're automatically approved, so that's a ministerial approval. But there might be some standards where we allow ADUs, for example, that are bigger or taller than, than these standards, and, and then allow someone to apply for a use permit for those, so. But not all the standards should be allowed to have exceptions, for example, OWTS requirements, slope stability requirements, coastal resource protection requirements, those sorts of things. So that, that could also be part of the discussion as to which of these standards you would allow to be altered with approval of a use permit, which means it would come to the planning commission and a public hearing. And then another issue that we've kind of been talking about all along is limitations on, on ADUs. So in, in most jurisdictions, we wouldn't be talking about this because state law limits how much you can limit ADUs, but because we're in the coastal zone, and because Trinidad is non-septic, there's limited water, you know, there's bluff stability, and those sorts of things. We, we may need to consider limitations on, on ADUs to, to protect some of those things. We've talked about a variety of, of kind of limitations. I have been reviewing the county of Mendocino's new ADU ordinance that is, has been submitted to the coastal commission. And I don't have, you know, there's not a coastal commission staff report on that yet, but county staff has been meeting with coastal commission staff, and some of that, their comments are reflected in the ordinance. One of the things there, they've done is to cap the number of ADUs to, to limit impacts on, on coastal resources, in, in particular, in that case, it's impacts on, on Highway 1, which is only allowed to be a two-lane road in, in most areas of Humboldt County. And so I think the coastal commission had concerns about that, so they're capping the number of ADUs to limit the, the traffic impacts. And there were some other things I, I thought were interesting in that ordinance. And it brought up some other amendments, I mentioned that in my memo. So we may need to review some of the general plan policies, for example, that, that limit housing to just single-family housing, and we may need to change some of the other sections of the ordinance, like adding a ministerial coastal development permit, for example, adding an exemption for, for JADUs. The other thing I want to look at is, is a permit waiver process, which I'd like to implement anyway. But for ADUs, that would be particularly important for anything that requires a septic improvement, because under the Coastal Act currently, any kind of septic improvements are not exempt from coastal development permits, and we've kind of, for, for repairs, we've, we've gotten around that, but I'm not sure how much longer we can do so. And so with this ordinance, I think that's something that we're gonna have to address, because most ADUs are going to sort of intensify the development on the lot. That wouldn't apply to JADUs, JADUs would be exempt because they encompass a bedroom and they're very small, and so they're not expected to increase water use or, or septic needs and that sort of thing. But, so for ADUs to be ministerial, anything that requires a septic upgrade would kick that out into a real coastal development permit process. So it might be nice to have a waiver process where we can waive that requirements for things that are minor. You know, they're not near environmentally sensitive habitat, they're not near unstable slopes. You know, it's not. Anyway, so we can, we can look at some standards for waivers, so we will have some additional sections to look at. Couple of things, so I, I included some of the limitations we've talked about, or that I've sort of thought about, what we can do, I'm not necessarily recommending most of these. I think they're of limited usefulness, I think limiting within a certain distance from a bluff, that might be a good one. Either limiting them on unstable slopes, that would cut out quite a bit of the city, so I think just meeting the standards, the, the geologic feasibility development standards probably covers that. Lot coverage is something to think about, our previous ordinance did have some standards for lot coverage. At this point, I'm not 100% sure what that's based on. And I do think it would be good to include lot coverage requirements when we update the zoning ordinance for all development. But we could do so for ADUs at this point as well, so I included a little bit of, of numbers in there. And then, you know, we'd have to define how that, how that's measured as well, so that's something to think about. So other than that, I would just like you to review these development standards and some of these comments and questions, and provide me feedback. And then for the next iteration, I should be able to present you with a complete ordinance, although, like I said, there might be other sections of the zoning ordinance or general plan we need to consider amending as well as part of this.
All right, thank you very much. So what I was thinking is, commissioners, is that we could potentially start with general comments, and then maybe go through section by section from A through R, and just see what comments you have, does that sound like a good? Okay, so let's start with general comments, does anyone have anything generally that they'd like to, you know, respond to in the document?
Well, I, I, as I was reading through this, I thought that since there are a number of different decision points through the whole permitting process, that it might be useful to have some sort of decision tree or decision matrix so that we could, so that a, a parcel owner could take a look at that diagram or decision matrix, whatever you would, what we decide to call it, and, and understand for each one of the issues, for example, septic, height requirements, parcel coverage area, those kinds of things. And as you walk through and say yes or no, that these are issues that have to be resolved either through permitting or are, would, would revert to the ministerial approval, it might give people some help in determining the complexity or simplicity of, of turning something into an ADU or making it an ADU. And so I thought that, that as a general comment, that, that just sounded reasonable to me because I got, I was getting very confused as I was walking through this in terms of, well, okay, now is that gonna be ministerial, or is that gonna be, do I need a CDP, what kind of permit do I need? If I have an OWTS permit, do I have to do anything, those kinds of things. So this is a general comment.
Okay, any other general comments? I think my comments were more within the context of the ordinance, so I don't have anything general either at this time. So let's go ahead and move to the actual ordinance, and we'll start with A, well, actually, just to make this kind of simple, instead of doing A and then B and then C, let's, let's go ahead and say, let's just do A through C, let's do the first three, A through C, because B, it looks like, does have some changes, and let's see if there are any comments on that.
I had a question on B, would it be appropriate, and I don't know what the desire is, ADU or JADU? Are we, are we open to having both an ADU and a JADU on the same unit, or the same parcel? Can we limit that, is that something we're interested in? That was all I had for A, B, and C.
Yeah, so that's a good question, so, so is your, your thought, Erin, that, so, so it says the state ADU law allows up to two, or one ADU and a JADU on a single-family lot? And so you're saying, since we're limiting to one ADU, it would be one ADU or JADU, correct?
That would be my suggestion, yeah, just from a density, and how that kind of compounds all of our challenges in town.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, my comment on that one was, I, I was just agreeing that this made sense, I just wasn't sure if we can do things that are different than the state law. And I guess that was my question, right?
Yeah, and that, that is a good question, so, but I don't have an, an answer because I would need to get some feedback from the coastal commission, so.
Okay.
I do think that it would be good to submit this ordinance to the coastal commission soon. I think once we get, you know, a draft put together, and maybe some of the other regulations that we need, it would be good to submit to the coastal commission. And, you know, HCD does have to review it as, as well, and I, I don't know exactly what their process is with the coastal commission. Like I said, I, I don't think there's been a whole lot of ADU ordinances in the coastal zone recently, since these new requirements, so, you know, it might be a new process for them too in terms of how HCD and the coastal commission kind of work out some of the issues. But I think we should start with what, what you guys think is appropriate for Trinidad.
Okay, well, I, I agree with Commissioner Hakinen that you should say ADU or JADU, but I'd like to hear if Richard or Tom have any objections to that, or or further thoughts.
Well, I, I wasn't too concerned about it because we covered the JADUs in another section. And I, I, I'm fine with it either way, but I, I thought that in the previous sections that we looked at last month, that we covered it pretty well. And, and in my mind, it's very clear that you can have a JADU and an ADU on the same parcel.
Oh, you could, okay, so, so, okay.
But I, I'm finding.
No, but that's a good, that's a good point, if we kept all the JADU stuff in the other section, I kind of forgot about the fact that they were not overlapping, they're in two different sections. So maybe we're okay with it as is, what do you think, Erin?
Yeah, I guess my, you know, and it's a question of, you know, is there this great pent-up demand for either of these two things? You know, just sort of bursting at the seams with requests as soon as we get this out there. You know, if it becomes an issue, I guess we can, we can revisit it, you know, my concern is just, you know, our water is in short supply, we've got OWTS issues, and now if you're, you know, say, for example, my home, if I were to do a JADU in one of my existing bedrooms, it's unoccupied, that's now an impact on those two factors. Then if I do an ADU as well, now I'm just drawing down some precious resources that we struggle with. You'd be struggling more and more, that was kind of my only thought there. I didn't know if, if we're interested in limiting it, if we need to just put something kind of respectively in both sections, the JADU and the ADU, but if, if, if we don't have a choice, and we can do both, then so be it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I thought, go ahead, Trevor.
I was just gonna say, it looks like the way it's currently written, the, the JADU regulations allow one JADU per parcel, and so as currently written, I think it would allow one of each. And one, another option would be to, you know, if, if a parcel already has a JADU, you know, maybe it would kick the ADU into a use permit.
But then again, the goal, and I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, is to try and increase affordable housing stock, so is that really something worth limiting, because it's a problem you need to solve, so I'm fine leaving it as is, I guess, then.
Yeah, I am too, I, I have to admit though, that it did give me pause a little bit too, to think that, you know, somebody putting in a JADU and an ADU on, on a, I mean, it kind of depends on the parcel, right? And some parcels, that would be a lot, and others maybe not, but anyway, okay, I, I think I'm fine with it too. I think I've talked myself back around on that one.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it goes back to the fundamental definition of what a JADU is supposed to be. And, and if, if we are, if we are assuming that it is no impact on resources, which is essentially, I think, the way that we have defined it up to this point, then whether or not there is a JADU there or not should not impact whether or not you can also have an ADU. So that's, that was my rationale for saying that this was fine the way it was, so, but, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, that was one of the assumptions that we made, was that it wasn't gonna be additional water and so forth.
Right.
I know, you know, it doesn't change the footprint of the building, okay. Tom, I'm gonna give, have any thoughts you want to add?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great, to me, it's all about septic anyway. If the septic can handle it.
Yeah, yeah, so the, I guess the JADU, we're talking about ADUs tonight, so. Trevor, what was the thing with ADUs on the bathrooms, I, I think I have it in my notes here, they do have to have one, or they do, do not?
Yeah, so JADUs do not have to have their own bathroom, although number of bathrooms isn't actually a factor in how septic systems are sized. But an ADU would have to have, yes, it would have to have a restroom and a kitchen, it would have to be a fully, fully-contained living unit, and I, I agree with Tom that it's really going to be all about the, I mean, septic is going to limit the number of parcels that can accommodate an ADU.
Okay, yep. All right, let's move on to DEF, which is unit size setbacks on height, any comments on that?
Well, I'll, I'll kick it off, I know this is a stretch, but as I was thinking about this section D, unit size, I, I remember that there are, oh, a couple of parcels in town which have very large sheds or storage buildings, which are actually bigger than the primary resident, residents. And, and so just for clarification, when we say that the floor area of an attached ADU shall not exceed 50% of the primary dwelling, the first thing I thought was, well, someone could say, I want to put an ADU in this shed, which is bigger than my residence, but does that mean that I have to partition off some of it so that it is only 50% of the primary residence? And, and so I, I guess I was looking for a little bit of clarification on whether or not we were saying that if, if the building, the structure itself was larger than the primary residence, that the ADU contained within it could only be 50%? Is, is that the way you meant it to be?
Thank you for bringing that up, Richard, that's a good point, so. One, I think, I guess it would depend on if the shed is attached or detached, because the, the limitation on 50% of the primary dwelling is only for attached ADUs. But the state law, and that's not in, in these regulations, the state law is that if your ADU is in an existing detached accessory structure, it can be as big as the detached accessory structure. And that seems a little excessive to me, but on the other hand, it's still gonna be limited by septic requirements.
Yeah.
Or at least, at least the number of bedrooms would, but you could have, you know, a 2,000-square-foot garage or shed, and, you know, make it a one-bedroom ADU?
Yeah, it, it just started to get a little gray to me, and, and it also then raises the issue, and I know we're gonna talk about it a little bit later, but I'll just mention it at this point, about the height restrictions as well. So. Okay, I, that's my concern, just, just, just the way it's worded right now.
And so what do you, I mean, what would your preference be? So if someone has a large, a large detached structure, should the ADU be allowed to be the full structure?
Well, my thought when I first read this was, then this drives you right into a CDP, or some sort of permitting or review process, I guess I should say. And, and so, and there's not that many, I, I, in the, on the top of my head, I can only think about two or three in the entire city. So this is not a big issue, but, you know, you always have to worry about the outliers. And so I, I think, you know, maybe some, some wording in there to the, to the, to the effect that something, if you don't meet these requirements and, and your ADU will be larger than the primary residence, it has to come to the planning commission for review, or something to that effect.
Yeah, and, and I think, and I was thinking that size would definitely be one of the standards that can be exceeded with approval of a use permit.
Yes.
And, you know, I think the one, I think 1,000 square feet, so again, the, the state regulations are, and, and even if the guidebook, I, I encourage you to go try and figure out what the size limit is. It's, it is an exercise in frustration. I think if we went 1,200 square feet, I know we're safe. And that is what was in our previous ordinance, but then there's also this standard for And that is what was in our previous ordinance. But then there's also this standard for, you know, 1,000 square feet, if it's multiple bedrooms, and 850 for zero to one bedrooms. But again, there's another section that says you can't require less than 1,200 square feet. So, and I, I haven't, it's not clear when those various standards apply. So, but I think if we went with 1,200, we would cover our basis, bases. And then, yes, I think that I need to... Oh, so, well, it does have the language. So A D Us created within a footprint of an existing detached accessory structure may be as big as the accessory structure. So I think we could take that out and argue with H C D that bigger than that really needs review and, and approval.
Bigger than 1,200 square feet? Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I, I think generally it's, the stuff I read was up to 1,200 square feet or 50% of the living area. And then anything over that comes to the planning commission for review would cover a large accessory structure, maybe? But then that's, um, so that's if it's detached. But attached,
Okay.
You're saying 50% of the primary dwelling for attached, right?
Yes, and that, and that would be whether or not that's an addition. So, um, you know, maybe they're carving it all out within the same footprint, like a J A D U, except bigger. Or they may be adding on, um, to their residence to create the A D U. So that could be either way.
So why is the, or i- is it part of the state guidelines that the, there's a limit of 800 square feet for an attached?
Well, no, you, it's a minimum of eight. You have to allow at least 800 square.
Oh, at least, I see. Sorry. Okay.
Now, someone can come in and request a six or 700 square foot A D U, and that's fine. But you can't, you know, if it's a, if it's a 1,500 square foot house, you can't limit them to 50% of that, because that's not 800, you have to allow at least 800 square feet.
I see. So that's a minimum. Got it. And then is there, and then the maximum is the same? 1,200 square feet or 50% of the?
There's no maximum on that one right now.
I see. Okay. Okay. Well, that's why, it's, that's probably why it's, yeah, it's just different between those two. Maybe what we should do, I almost, well, I don't know, just for, it's a thought for clarity, maybe, maybe we should say unit size, detached unit size is D, and attached unit size is E, and keep them as two separate bullets or something, because, because the state in its infinite wisdom has made it a little bit confusing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then I, yeah, I like the idea of bringing it to the planning commission if it's over a certain size, because that'll, then we can kind of take a look at it and... I mean, you could literally have another whole house. Yeah.
So, I'm trying to... So for a detached, a detached A D, A D U, is there a minimum size? I'm just trying to...
Good question. Yep.
No. Um, now someone wants to build a 250 square foot detached A D U. And even with the attached, there's not, we're not setting a minimum. You don't have to have an 800 square foot A D U. But the city can't require you to have less than that. So someone can propose less, and that's fine. So these are, these, this is a minimum, maximum, a maximum, minimum.
Okay.
So, so we can limit it to 50% of the primary dwelling, except that you're allowed at least 800 square feet, but you don't have to have 800 square feet.
Okay, for attached.
For attached.
For a detached, I could make it whatever size I want within, either as a new structure, or even I could carve out a piece within an existing detached structure.
That's correct. So under, under the state law, it's 1,200 or 1,000 or 850, I don't know. And or however big the existing structure is.
Well, oh, oh, okay, but, but we have to remember that item G for new A D Us will kick in. So it can't be as big as they, as you want it to be.
True, that's right. So that's gonna, you know, again, septic requirements, and if we have lot coverage requirements, which, you know, I, I think that that adds a little bit of a different element that we don't currently have in our zoning ordinance. So I'm, I'm not sure at this point about adding that. Like I said, I'd like to include that for all development, but because we don't have it currently for other development, does it overcomplicate A D Us to have a lot coverage? And we're going to have to define, you know, what that means, which that, that's fine, you know, is that structures or is that all impervious surfaces? I, I think is the main question for that. I think, you know, currently we do have a Florida area ratio. Florida lot area, which kind of is a lot coverage limitation, although, you know, it allows you to go higher potentially. Well, actually, let's see. Now, having a lot coverage might encourage people to go higher. Um, the Florida air, area ratio kind of limits both, in a sense.
So if we said, you know, we break to, break up detached and attached, and then like a D and an E, and we say what a detached A D U, that it, it has no minimum, we, we could say it has no minimum, because I think that's what you said, but the maximum, you know, shall not exceed whether it's 1,000 or 1,200. And then for the attached, we say, um, there's no minimum, but, um, but, um, at least 800 square feet shall be allowed. And then that, at least 800. So you're saying that maximum, that's the minimum max?
So the max would be 50% of the primary dwelling.
Primary dwelling, right. Okay. So, yeah, so maybe, and then we have the gating factor of the septic and the, and the, to, um, Richard's point, to the, the Florida area ratio. If we decide to adopt that.
But that would only kick in for new construction? Is that correct? The lot coverage and floor area? At least the way it's currently written, or?
That's correct. So, um, and maybe we need to add some language that A D Us would be allowed in existing structures, even if it's non-conforming as to lot coverage, if you're not adding on to lot coverage.
So you're saying, for example, you're just living within existing non-conforming buildings, right?
Yeah. And so, for example, for the setbacks, that's allowed. So there are some garages, for example, on alleys that don't meet setbacks, and you are allowed to convert that into an A D U. So we could say the same thing for lot coverage, that if it's within an existing building, the lot coverage standard doesn't apply if you're not expanding the footprint.
So then this looks like a place where we would want to break this down into existing structures and new structures.
Yeah, yeah. For, that makes sense, for simplicity.
Well, and for clarification.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I was just laughing about this simplicity part.
Adding more sections for simplicity. No, I get it.
Well, and it, maybe it's subsections, so... So maybe I actually combine D and G, but I have separate subsections for attached, new construction detached, and existing detached.
Yeah, you could, you could, I mean, I mean, we could put it in a table, but, um, since it's for an ordinance, that doesn't, yeah, it's probably better to do it that way.
But, but it still meets all the handicap requirements?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that is actually a separate standard, I believe. So that's N.
All right, we're, yeah, we'll get there in a sec. So, any, anything, sorry, anything else between, uh, on, uh, A, B, C, D, let's see, so D E F, and I guess we're, we're on to G as part of this discussion, so, uh, because I bet. But I think we've covered that.
I have a couple, I have just two points for E and F if we're there.
Yes.
For E, the setback, it says A D Us may also be permitted legally constructed structures located within required, so, you know, pre-existing ones. Do we want to list the criteria and define may a little bit more, or change it to should or shall? Or just, just a comment on that one. I guess I'll stop with that one first.
Sure, uh, yeah, we could make that, um, shall, that's more clear.
And then for heights, I had just kind of this, a similar thought. There's a, a few buildings in town, not many, where there is a detached garage. I'm looking at one down the street that is higher than 16 feet, I believe. So I don't know, you know, pre-existing, we want to allow that opportunity to exist.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. So I would, um, add to F, I would say a new detached A D U, or a detached A D U that, yeah, probably a new detached A D U not located in an 16 structure shall be no greater than 16 feet in height.
Just a quick question about the height. Our height limit for a house is 25 feet, but our, our current height limits for accessory structures are 16.
It's actually 15 currently. Um, so you can, in, in certain areas of the city, you can have a 500 square foot accessory structure, 15 feet in height without design review. And, but the state, under the state law, it's 16 feet in height.
Oh, it is. Okay. That's why I was wondering where the 16, where that came from. Okay. And sorry, Aaron, I think you had a two-parter there, right?
Uh, no, that was it, E and F. Those are, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. And then, back to D real quick, so what, so, um, it seems like maybe 1,200 seemed like an acceptable limit, but that will take off the detached accessory structures maybe as big as the accessory structure. So we'll bump it up to 1,200 square feet, but we're not going to allow them bigger than that in existing accessory structures. Is that what I was hearing?
I think there was a discussion about bringing that to the planning commission. So anything over 1,200, whether it was attached, detached, in an existing structure, would need approval? Is that what I?
Yeah, so, so then on top of that, I don't think that has to be written into this section, but that would be one of the sections where you are allowed to deviate from that if you get a use permit from the planning commission.
Right. Does that make, how does that sound, uh, Richard, Aaron, and Tom?
Diane's joined us too.
Oh, and Diane. Okay.
I'm, yeah, I, I, I think that's fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Um, okay. Other questions on D, Trevor?
Good.
I think, I think that's good. Okay.
And then E for the setbacks, I think we were, we were clear on that. Uh, we're going to make it shall be permitted. Height, uh, we left it at 16 feet. So we're officially on G, lot coverage and floor area.
For heights, Cheryl, for heights, it was just 16 feet and less than a pre-existing structure.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So the, the lot coverage and floor area was from the other, the previous, uh, previously adopted ordinance?
Yes.
So... So is a que, so the question is, do we want to keep that? Does it make sense? So there was a problem with the math, right? Because you could, and normally we have a 2,000 foot guideline square foot for the, uh, dwelling, but then if there's an 800 square foot minimum, or ma- minimum, maximum minimum, that would be 2,800 square.
That, that's a, yeah, I was thinking that might make more sense, and then that's, that's 35% Florida area ratio, because 2,600 square feet on an 8,000 square foot lot is like a 32 and a half. So those two, those two numbers together don't necessarily make sense to me. So that's why I was thinking 2,835%. And then, and that would be Florida area ratio. Lot coverage is a little different. Um, and again, we don't, we don't currently have that for the development, so I'm not sure we want, we really want to add that for A D Us. I mean, like I said, I would like to add that for all development. I'm just not sure this is the place to start that.
Start going up. Yeah, so I would vote for, I like the 2,800, uh, 35% ratio, and maybe keeping the lot coverage out for now. But that's, that's my thought. I'd like to hear what the commissioners, uh, think as well on G.
Well, I, I, I got real confused, because if you go back to the original A D U ordinance, and you look at the definition of lot coverage and floor area, and, and Trevor, maybe it's just, maybe it's just a typo, but it says that floor area is measured to the outside surface of exterior walls, the walls of the living space. So could you explain what that means? I'm looking at, um, uh, it's on page seven of 15 of the, um, ordinance, about the middle of the page. And I got real confused as to what the floor area was. Floor to area ratio. You're on mute.
That's a good point. Um, the existing, and I, what I want to do is I want to grab my notebook and see if that is from the state law, or if that's something we added in our previous ordinance. I'd like to look at that. We do, our current zoning ordinance does have a definition of floor area. It does not have addition, a, a definition of floor to area ratio. That is, it's not something that's currently codified, but it's something that we have used for decades.
Yeah, I know. So, so the, the floor area is measured to the exterior walls of the structure.
Yeah, which is a little bit different than, you know, normally, I think, you know, architectural type drawings, they generally measure floor area interior. But Trinidad zoning ordinance defines it as exterior to exterior.
So, um, just, just to follow up to that, but whatever we decide to do here, I think we need to add, uh, that to the definition section. So it's very clear what, uh, these different, uh, terms are, are really, what they really are.
Yep. Good point.
Agreed.
So other thoughts on, on D?
Where, where would it be for, um, view, view shed? Um, or could we limit that? It was like, say... so I see around town, a lot of places where you could put these with, it wouldn't impact, and, and wouldn't impact any of the neighbors. But if these were put in a place where it's going to block your ocean view, um, that's not what the coastal commission wants, I don't think either, so is there a way that we say that if that's going to happen, then it has to get a special come to the planning commission or something like that? Trevor?
That's a good, good question, um. You know, the coastal act does not protect private views. So, um, but it does protect public views. Public views is actually not an issue that comes up very often, actually. Um, it's really the private views that really become an issue, um. And that's something I, I have definitely thought about, I think that, um, I don't think that we'll be able to get away with protecting private views with ADUs, um, that, that meet the state standards. But that's sixteen feet in height, although if someone's adding on to an existing house that's twenty-five feet in height, then that ADU could be twenty-five feet and block private views. Um, but I'm not sure I have a, because the coastal act doesn't protect private views, I don't think that's something that Trinidad can
But we could put something in, we could put something in the ordinance that says that, I mean, if I would be if I was used to a view and then suddenly there was a small unit being put up without flagging or anything, I would, I would be going, why isn't there some kind of, something saying whether or not this becomes a public, or at least the neighbors should be asked. Right? If, if suddenly the, there, it was blocking a view that the neighbors are all used to, that should have to go up in front of somebody to see if it could happen or not.
I, I think that's going to be one of the most contentious pieces of this ordinance, because I'm I don't think we can do that for, for private views.
Trevor, if I could just jump in, um, uh, I, I, I thought we had a views and, views and vegetation ordinance that would kick in in a case like this.
But that's just for vegetation, it doesn't cover structures. So normally, normally, and the reason we have the views and vegetation ordinance is because we had design review, we had the regulations that cover structures. But we didn't have the regulations that cover vegetation, even though the general plan does talk about landscaping and vegetation, so we adopted the views and vegetation ordinance. Um, this, so that wouldn't apply, um.
I got it backwards.
It's something that's I mean, I can, I can certainly, um, ask the question of both HCD and, and the coastal commission, but I think, you know, the coastal commission it, it's going to have to be something that, that we we're going to have to tackle when we do our general plan update, because, because the coastal act doesn't protect private views. Private view protection really shouldn't be part of the city's LCP. Um, it should be a separate it should be separate and outside of what's certified by the coastal commission. Um, and it's going to be interesting, um, how to deal with that.
Yeah, that's, it is a little tricky, because, you know, if someone has a, a twenty-five hundred square foot house and they decide to add a, an ADU onto that house, that could be basically a twelve hundred and fifty foot addition to their house. So now they have a thirty-two hundred, you know, i- i- it kind of defeats the purpose of our guideline of two thousand square feet, you know, uh, especially for new construction, because now you can add on, you could say it's an ADU, but then later on, let's say you convert it back from an ADU. Um, and it's no longer an ADU, you now have basically gotten an addition to your house and add a, add a twenty-five feet. And so Tom's point about view shed is, you know, is an interesting one, um, also for that same reason. But, uh, this is kind of interesting.
So, so in, in, in cases that we, that I remember from the past where people have uh, property owners have wanted to put up either a, a, a two-story uh, a structure that would have really impacted people's views, or even, I remember even at one point that somebody was going to put up solar panels and people were concerned about, uh, views. And, and it reverted back to the planning commission. And so I think this would fall into that category as well, where, um, if it was I don't know exactly how you define it, but if there was an impact to views, then it would probably have to come to the planning commission. And it would be up to the neighbors to, uh, raise that as an issue when they are, are notified of the re, planning commission review, right? Am I, do I have that process right?
Yeah, so even with a ministerial CDP, the neighbors do get notified, even though there's no public hearing, the neighbors do get notified, and it could be appealed to the coastal commission. Um, but again, the coastal commission is not going to accept an appeal for private view impacts, because it's not a coastal act issue. Um, one idea might be as a starting point to limit attached, new construction attached to sixteen feet as well.
Yeah. First, yeah, sixteen feet or a certain footprint, I mean, what, what, I know Diane wants to speak, I, I'll just make a quick point and then, and I'll let her chime in, um. The fact that Trinidad has been somewhat buffered by, you know, I'm reading from your software, Trevor, um, from requirements, because the state ADU law does not supersede local coastal programs. I wonder if we can kind of you know, tamp down what people can do and the height and the view shed issues. Uh, because we are, you know, it is a local coastal program, and so we are a little unique. And maybe, maybe we don't have to go to, to that extent, so anyway, that's, that was just one thought. Diane, you wanted to?
Yeah, yeah, what, we, we do need to probably do a special in the general plan, we're going to need to deal with, um, view shed issues. And my, um, opinion on this, um, ADU height is sixteen feet, not twenty-five. We're giving them the ability to put another structure on a piece of property. So we don't get to give them twenty-five feet. And then here we go, you know, all over town, we've got all these twenty-five feet, um, ADUs or even junior ADUs, I don't know, I think it's going to be tricky and we need to have the standard set. And I'm, I don't want to expand the, um, square footage, I want it to stay at twenty-six hundred. If we keep giving them more and more, they're going to take it.
Yeah, so the, the reason for that was the, the states, the eight hundred square feet minimum plus the two thousand that we already have.
Right.
Though it just added up to twenty-eight hundred, but if you, but your point is that you think that's too much?
Yeah, well, and then we're going to get into the parking issue and it's going to be a mess.
Yeah. So Diane, are you saying sixteen feet, uh, height limit for attached or detached?
Right.
Just to make sure I understood.
Yeah, because they're, you know, they're getting a break on standards and permits, and so that's what they get, sixteen feet. I mean, that's, that's what I feel like, you know, and I don't know, maybe, maybe we're not going to have thirty-six ADUs, but in the meantime they need to have restrictions, I mean, there are people already in an uproar about what's going on in, on stagecoach with the business and garages and different things that are going on through the, uh, county, um, planning commission, so I think we need to be um, structured and, you know, a little bit strict. You know, the na, the neighbors in the neighborhood, I don't know. Okay, I, I think that's it, I just thought sixteen feet and twenty-six hundred.
All right, uh, we need to kind of close on this to give Trevor some guidance. Um, I'm, I'm still in that twenty-eight hundred square feet, but I think I'm stuck on the math, um, but I do like the idea of kind of, um, relying more on the fact that we're, uh, LCP driven more than state regulations on this, and that we can try to kind of limit things a bit. I mean, I, I, I too don't think that any, we're going to get thirty-some ADUs, but what I'm concerned about is someone adding on to fifty percent of the size of their house, twenty-five feet, and, you know, it will come to the planning commission, but if we don't have it in the ordinance, some guy, some structure to the ordinance that prevents it, then we get into this situation where we're we, we don't have the ordinance to back up our decisions, right, where, and so I'd rather personally, I think I'd rather have it in there, but, um, you could change my mind, Commissioner Johnson, Hickenin or Hopkins?
Well, I'd, I'd like to not learn on the first one that, that takes advantage of it, and then we go, oh, I wish we would have thought of that. Like, I'd, I'd like to put it in as, as tight as possible when it comes to keeping the character of Trinidad. The view shed, everything, if we can make it just, yeah, make them have to jump through hoops if they're going to affect the neighbors' view shed.
I, I don't know if we can do this, because, you know, Cheryl, you've put the idea in my head, the kind of the, the backward conversion, you know, into, uh, an addition on a home, well, no, it's an ADU, oh, I don't want an ADU anymore, now it's this, you know. I, is it, how, how much of a, could we start by just simply saying anything that involves new construction has to come to the commission, I, I, is that something we could do? And, and how do, I, I, I know. I see you smiling, Trevor.
We could try, um. So, you know, the, the state law, actually, what it says is nothing in this law shall supersede the coastal act. So the state law says coastal act. I put LCP because the coastal commission has told me that because our LCP is certified, it does have the same kind of force and effect as another state law, which is why like, the school has to come to the city for coastal development permits, normally schools, state land, they're exempt from local jurisdictions. Um, and I think even though, even though, but I think there, the argument can be made that we have a certified LCP that protects private views, it has done so for forty years. Um, and that, um, so to, that new construction should be limited to sixteen feet in height. Um, and, and that should most, and, and we can also argue that that protects private, public views as well, because anything over that maybe affects public views. Um, and so that, that can be the sort of argument that, um, you know, things over sixteen feet, you know, can affect bulk scale, um, you know, community character, public views, um, all those kind of things that I think are important. So I would propose changing F to, um, new construction is limited to sixteen feet in height regardless of attached or detached. Yeah, so that's one. In terms of floor area, so just, I did see that the definition of living area does come from the state code. Um, and like I said, we do have a definition of floor area in the zoning ordinance, but we, I think we do need a definition of floor to area ratio, um, in there, if, if we're going to use that in here. You know, the, the square footage one is, is kind of a, a tough one, um. The two thousand square feet is, is intended to kind of reduce mansionization, um, and adding an ADU as attached structure would certainly increase the bulk of the structure. But, but state law allows you at least eight hundred square feet, so you know, regardless of what total square footage you put on there, you know, if it's a, you know, there's plenty of houses that are over two thousand square feet already. And you know, if they add, they're, they're allowed at least eight hundred square feet in addition to that, so I don't know that having a total floor area
Yeah.
really does much at all, um.
So, so maybe we take that out, I mean, the more we're talking about it, the more it seems like it, it isn't really ever going to make sense in, in the real world, right, because you're, if, if the law is that they can have eight hundred square feet, you can't restrict them, you can't say, oh, you can only have five. Then there's no way that we can say, you've got an eighteen hundred square foot place, you know, where you can only put you know, six, for example, so it, it's not going to work anyway. Even at twenty-eight hundred or whatever, so.
Yeah, and, and basically same with the floor to area ratio, um. Yeah, I just, I, I, I think, you know, the, the septic requirements are going to limit lot coverage. That's going to be the limitation on lot coverage.
Yeah.
Um, which is going to limit the size of a house. Um, I mean, I, I know of some very large one and two bedroom houses in Trinidad, um. But, um, and I guess you could do the same thing with an ADU, but yeah, I, I think the number of lots that really can accommodate a new ADU is going to be very limited, um, because of, because of septic requirements.
Okay, Diane, did you want to?
Yeah, so, so you add the lot size and then the parking and then the septic, and it's just going to be bulky. There are already some little ADUs tucked in and out of alleys that aren't, you know, noticed or recognized right away, so once we get the parking and the septic, it's going to be cumbersome. You know, and I'm not against them, but I'm just saying we don't need to give them anything, the state already said they can come into town and that's fine, because we need housing, but you know, we have this beautiful village and we are the body that can make the rules. So we need to do that, okay.
So Diane, what do you think about, and others, what do you think about taking out the lot coverage and floor area, because limiting it to any specific amount may not make sense, and so it may just have to be a use permit? If it's
I think you, you need to ask Trevor, I really wouldn't know about that.
All right, others? Other thoughts, you guys?
So, um, uh, uh, I'm just trying to think of how this applies to the SR zone. Um, because, uh, since the lots are larger, there's more room for ADUs. So, uh, ratios, floor to area ratios, or twenty-five percent lot coverage might not be an issue. Um, so, uh, uh, again, we may have to divide this up into, uh, requirements for specific zones. Uh, is one way of thinking about it. Um, but I, I'm inclined to go with, uh, I think someone said earlier, I, I, I think we stick with the fundamentals, the OWTS requirements, which drives leach field size, or leach field location and size. And, um, height, which we already have. Uh, and, uh, and I think we were saying that we were going to limit new construction to sixteen feet and we go from there. And, and keep it simple.
Yeah, that sounds good, so that, a- anybody disagree with that?
And just to add to that, I think you know, again, anything that requires septic improvements technically isn't going to be exempt from CDP.
Right.
And so, you know, we can, I, maybe that's where we put the limitation is you know, anything that requires more than you know, a certain improvement to the OWTS then has to come to the planning commission, so any, that, that then that kind of, anything that's large is going to have to come to the So any, that, that, then that kind of, anything that's large is gonna have to come to the planning commission. That might be a better, might be better justified and a better way to do that. Cause yeah, the more I think about the, you know, Richard brought up another good point, the, in the SR zone, these lot coverage and floor area things don't really, they're not gonna limit anything. Um, and you don't, you don't want them to be that big over there. Um, so yeah, I just think the usefulness of that is, isn't.
Okay, all right. And so Tom, thank you for bringing up the view shed issue. Um, I think we've hopefully addressed it. Um, the uh, next we're on H off-street parking, and then I'm gonna probably fast forward us to the whole uh, next page because there aren't as many items there. Any questions or comments on the off-street parking? Okay, I think it's fine as is.
I just had a question for Trevor. I'm, I'm trying to understand H two. What is the necessity? What problem is that trying to solve? I, I read through it a couple times and I got confused over what exactly that circumstance is and what we're trying to prevent or encourage with that.
So that is another one that's straight out of the state, um, state law. Um, apparently they're finding parking restrictions, you know, requirements for additional parking to be too restrictive on, for ADUs. Um, you know, parking's a that's one, you know, it's definitely a current planning issue where a lot of communities are doing away with minimum parking requirements. You know, to try and encourage people to use alternative modes of transportation. And, you know, for example, the city of Arcata is one that has subscribed to that. But I think the reality of the situation is in a place like Trinidad or even Arcata where there is a bus system, it's not good enough to eliminate the need for a car. And when it rains, people aren't gonna walk and take the bus. And so, so all it does is create more of a parking issue on the streets. Um, you know, and, and you see that in downtown Arcata. Um, and although, you know, I, I, I have been sort of, you know, we haven't analyzed the data from the parking counts. Um, you know, there are certainly busy times, busy days. But, you know, every time I've done a parking count, even on the busiest days, there's plenty of parking around town. Um, you know, it might not be right at the harbor. Um, that gets pretty packed, but you know, there's parking on all the streets, um, as far as I've seen. So, but anyway, what this is for is, so, so the bus stop is over there by Murphy's and the gas station. And anywhere with, that's within walking distance, so not as the crow flies, you'd measure it, street distance, within half a mile, you can't require parking. Um, so that's the state law. Um. In addition, let's see, the ADU.
I, I guess for me more, I, I'm just trying to understand an example of one that would meet section one and then also, I, I don't know, as I read them, it seemed like they kind of conflicted with each other. Um, the ADU shall provide one off-street space per unit, right, da, 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 da. But if it currently meets the standards, then it doesn't have to. I, I, I don't know, they just, I, I'm trying to wrap my head around this.
Yeah, I, I was a little confused by two B because I, I kind of raised.
Two A again, two B is the one that, yeah.
What else could it, could it be, right? It's either part of the proposed structure or the existing primary residence, I guess. Or maybe it means or an existing accessory structure, but.
And, and maybe I'm making something out of nothing, but if it's in here, I, I'm trying to understand what it means and why it's in here.
No, if it's confusing you, it'll probably confuse, but.
Yeah, um, and I might have modified this a little bit. So, cause for example, um, if, if an ADU takes up covered parking, so a carport or garage, you can't require replacement parking under the state law. Um, in Trinidad, you're required two spaces in addition to any garage spaces. So if an ADU converted a garage, that actually doesn't affect parking. Um, if it converted a carport, it would affect parking. So let's see, on a lot. I think I might have added the part where it's conforming. So if it already has its two parking spaces for the, so currently for a single-family resident, you're required to have two parking spaces in addition to any garage spaces. So basically two parking spaces. Um, and so what I was getting at there is that you have to at least, so even if you're within half a mile of the transit stop, if you only have one parking spot on the lot and you're non-conforming, you s- you have to have the two parking spots. It is what I was trying to get at with that. So that you still have to have those two parking spots.
All right. Diane has a, has her hand up, uh, and then Richard, Diane, I think I saw your hand.
Okay, am I, am I unmuted? Well.
Yeah.
I think just required parking and then we will encourage tandem parking.
Richard, do you have a say, add as well?
Uh, well, my interpretation was this, that item one says that if you have an ADU, you must have one off-street parking for that ADU.
Right.
In addition to the parking that is required for the primary residence. So in my mind, if you have an ADU, that's three parking pa- spaces that you need to have. Then if you look at two, is that if the, if the lot on which the ADU is proposed is currently conforming uh, for parking for the primary residence, if you already have the two plus the one, there are additional parking will be required if you are then within one half mile or part of a proposed uh, 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 existing residence or accessory structure. To me, it basically says you must have a minimum of three parking spaces. And if you have that, you don't need any more unless you meet, unless you um, are required to take care of two A or two B.
The two A and two B means you, you don't have to add any additional.
Sorry, the other way around.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah. Well, we were, we were right with you. That was good. All right.
I, I just wanna make a quick correction. So item two is currently conforming as to parking for the primary residence, so only two spots, not three.
Right, right.
And so you don't, so you don't need to add the one.
The third.
You don't have to add the third under these conditions.
Yeah, so maybe, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna point out, and then the state had a bunch of other limitations that don't apply in Trinidad. It might just be easier to include them, but it's, since we don't have them now, we'd have to do an LCP amendment to add them and then we could add it then. Um, but the, the car share one, I think is, again, it's a very poorly thought out, poorly written section of the state law because those are private, like how do you even monitor, those change constantly. Um, so how do you even moni- that's crazy. Um, cause you could have one a block away and then by the time the structure's built, it's not there anymore. So, um, I, I think that's just nuts. Um, so I didn't include those.
Okay.
But there are several more that are in the state law.
So maybe just a suggestion then for, for clarity on the off-street parking is, I think what you were trying to do, Trevor, and one, where you say, except as provided in two, maybe you just say, you know, the ADU shall provide one off-street parking space per unit and then just continue that one. And then the next one is where you don't have to do that, right? So it's either one or the other. Do, does that make sense? Like, like trying to say, except as provided in two is where I think, I think we, our brains couldn't cope with that.
Well, I think that was the intent of the language is that you have to provide one space unless you, you know, unless one of the conditions of two applies.
Okay.
But it's, I, yeah, I could look at trying to get some better um, clearer wording in there.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, I think you, you see what we're struggling with, so.
Yeah.
And it could be, it could be, it could be us. Yeah, anyway, um, okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and move us on to, and this time we're gonna move on to for time. I'm, I'm conscious of the time and I'd really like to get to the short-term rental around seven thirty or so. We could wrap it about eight because I think that's a reasonable amount of time. Um, so let's just move on to the next page, which is um, I through O, actually, I through P. Now, I through O. Uh, any comments on any of this? I, I guess I'll start because I had a quick one. On the permanent foundation, I just made a little side note. Does that uh, rule out any tiny homes, for example, on trailers? Cause I could see somebody wanting to pull in a tiny home on a trailer. And then, of course, then we're gonna get into that, what's the difference between a tiny home and an RV or a mobile home, right? But I don't know how you guys feel about that, but part of me says if we're really trying to have affordable housing and somebody buys a little tiny home, it's, it's cheaper that way. They don't have to build a foundation. Um, it's a, be a great little studio apartment or something for a student. So I don't know. Um. Is the permanent foundation, I guess I'll ask, is that the law or just something we were thinking, Trevor?
Yeah, good, good question. Let's see if it's. So that was in the old, old ordinance. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's in the state law or if we added that for some reason, so I can check on that.
And maybe we wanna leave it. I, I'd like to hear when, let me open it up to the commissioners on other things on that or the rest of the page.
Well, just, just a comment on that one. Um, my first concern would be if you do pull in a small home on a trailer, then you have to be concerned about utility hookups. And, and certainly you wanna make sure that uh, your uh, septic hookup is right. And I think that was the intent with the permanent foundation because then you've got a solid, solid connection. And I don't know how they do them with uh, small trailers like that. Uh, I don't know if they can use flexible lines or whatever, but that would be my first concern was, and why that, that permanent foundation would be required unless there's some way of doing it with uh, a, a non-permanent installation, don't know.
Yeah, maybe we could, what we can do is look up what the current state guidelines are, are on that. Cause you know, every state has a different rule about tiny homes. Maybe we can see what the latest is for California because then, then we would have a definition of somebody, but that would be the one I would, I would be concerned about, I think, and maybe they always do have permanent foundations and then it's not an issue.
Yeah, I, I do know like, um, at least one of the ordinances I looked at, but it was for a big jurisdiction, um, included regu- separate regulations, ADUs, JADUs and tiny homes. Um, so they were treated as a separate category, but I, I will, I will check that.
Okay.
And then just be, before, I, I, so the new construction, converting it back to not an ADU, that's a, I think that's an interesting. Yeah, or, or you know, a new owner comes in and they just wanna get rid of the ADU. But it was done without permits, I mean, well, I mean, without the, the full permit that you would need to add on to your house. So, you know, I'm thinking of adding a, a deed restriction requirement that the ADU permitted under these regulations will remain an, an ADU. It can't be converted back to a single-family residence.
Ooh.
Or without, without approve, without approval, without a permit.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and I was gonna say, or maybe there's a time. Well, yeah, never mind, that would probably wouldn't work either. I was gonna say like two years, like you couldn't convert it within five years or something like that, but I, I think your idea is better for.
And, and I don't need to include it, I, you know, but I, um, you know, if, I think it's a, I think it's a legitimate concern. Um. And, you know, you could think about adding something like that.
For what it's worth on the, the tiny home piece, um, this handbook, Trevor, that you gave us, uh, page eighteen and nineteen talks about manufactured homes. Um, and it, they, the health and safety code defines it, you know, built after seventy-six, transportable in one or more sections. So I don't know, just as you're figuring it out, maybe another reference point for you. Um, on that, but the tiny home concept is an interesting one, you know, it certainly could make it very easy. But then does that open up a slippery slope for what makes it a tiny home versus an RV? Or a trailer or, you know, I mean, you know, where, where does that line, how do we define that? So the manufactured home might, might manage that for us. Um. I had a question on.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, maybe the architectural consistency helps too with the, but I, but I agree with you. That would be my concern about the tiny homes and it's just having a really solid definition so that it's not, you know, just pulling in an airstream and calling it an ADU.
Right.
Kind of thing.
Yeah, to me, a tiny home is an ADU, but it's just not on a trailer, it's just not on an axle. So then you go to trailer, you know, that's where permanent foundations, at least it, it keeps the city looking, um, it's permanent.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And, and then it could, it could be more architecturally, you know, like looking better, I think, than a bunch of trailers coming in.
Diane, did you wanna?
Yeah, I'm against the tiny home and the um, trailers. The um, ADU needs to have a permanent uh, foundation because it's right there with the house. Okay, we don't need to start letting those other, the tiny homes and the uh, trailers come in. There are special um, places for those, you know, whether it's a trailer park or a lot for tiny homes, but not.
Diane?
I don't think it's right.
Okay.
So, and I'll ask my husband about the foundation.
Okay, thank you. Cut out there for a second, but I think we got it. I think, yeah. All right, other comments on I through O?
I had one on N, just for clarity, um, for the accessibility ADA. It says all newly constructed first-floor ADUs. Um, I guess the question is, would that also include conversion of those existing buildings? You know, you've got a thousand square foot building and you're carving off a piece within that, would that be required to be ADA compliant? And maybe just clarifying that yes or no, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so um, so all newly constructed or converted, um, maybe?
Yeah.
You know, so for example, somebody has a, a, you know, tat, detached building and they wanna convert it, that's great, but you need to make it compliant and accessible, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I guess I have a real concern about that because the whole idea is to be able to take an existing structure which will not be ADU compliant and turn it into an ADU, meaning that, you know, people won't wanna go in and change the size of their doors or entrance ways. Uh, and, and so I, I'm a little concerned about uh, saying or converted because uh, I, I, I think that'll kill a lot of uh, ADU effort. Cause that's, that's not a, that's not a simple thing to do is to make it compliant.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I agree, and that might be why it was worded the way it was.
Newly constructed, I certainly understand that. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Uh, Diane? Uh, Diane?
So on, um, L, on utilities, so. All utilities for detached ADU shall be installed underground. Is that gonna fly, Trevor?
I think so, because it would just be from the existing meter, probably, um.
Kind of to Richard's point with the ADA, do we need to specify that's for newly constructed?
New construction. For new detached.
Is this from the state, Trevor? L?
No, the, the part about separate utility meters not being required, that is from the state, but probably the, I'm sure the underground is just Trinidad.
Okay, so I'm just curious about that.
In, um, another option might be to, it has to. Be consistent with the existing, so if the existing house has underground utilities, then the new ones have to be underground. If the existing house doesn't have underground, maybe the new one, the ADU doesn't have to have underground utilities. Maybe that would be the better.
Okay.
I'm excited, yeah. All right, let's move on to, uh, the last page, which is primarily a discussion, it looks like, on slope stability.
Wait, real quick, how about the occupancy and the STRs?
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead, Richard, pardon me.
I know we're bumping up against the seven thirty.
Yeah.
My, my comment was, under occupancy. Um, it says the principal place of re- residence of the property owner shall be either ADU or the primary unit for ADUs. But what it doesn't talk about is if both of the, uh, units are rented. Meaning that the.
Yeah.
You know, the property owner isn't living in either one of them, but certainly could rent both of them and be long-term rents. So I, I, I didn't understand that, and I think we need to clarify that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
So, so, yeah, so the previous state ADU law allowed an owner occupancy requirement for, for. A, ADUs, um, you know, e- existing ADUs that are in, that are there now, wouldn't, wouldn't be subject to that. So that's been a common requirement, and that was part of our previous ordinance, is that you have to live in one of the units. But the state. For, you know, until January first, twenty twenty-five, you cannot require that, so. So I added the, at, constructed after January twenty twenty-five, because right now. You cannot have an owner occupancy requirement. Now, you don't have to after twenty twenty-five, that's fine. I mean, if, if the idea is to increase housing. Then does it matter if the owner lives there? But I, I think a lot of communities have been more like. You know, we want it to be affordable housing, we don't want it to just be investment housing like STRs, um, so that's sort of the idea behind it. And then similar for, for STRs, um. You know, the way it's written, the ADU can't be an STR, but that means the owner could. Still rent out the primary unit as an STR, so does that, does it really matter? Um, so that was sort of, I just want the question to be. You know, should, can one or the other be an STR? You know, does it matter which one? Can neither be an STR? Um, or just follow the STR ordinance that says only one per property and that, because currently the ordinance says one per property unless you get a use permit. So that.
I thought, I thought it should follow the STR licensing, so if you, if you have a license for one and you're on the list. On your property, it, it shouldn't really matter whether it's an ADU or the primary residence, to me, and so I kind of had a question mark by that one.
Yeah, and that, that kind of makes sense to me, too, is why. You know, does it, does it matter which one is the STR?
It, it doesn't to me, and in fact, I would think from an STR perspective, that would actually, it could be a positive thing in a way, because you. You know, you'd have the owner living in one of the units, presumably, if they only have the license to rent out one, and there are two, I guess you could have a long-term renter in the other, though. Yeah, you could have a long-term renter in the other.
Well, that, that could be the limitation then, is, um. The, the, eh, the property can only have an STR if it's owner occupied.
Yeah, could do, you could say that. If the other, if the other unit is owner occupied, and they have a license, I guess, right? So.
Yes.
Well, how does, how does that play into the STR ordinance, though?
Seems like it, but, but, well, that would be a good segue, except we're not done.
I, I don't think it conflicts with the STR ordinance.
So for clarity, we're saying STR, the owner occupancy would be required if the other one was to be an ADU?
Well, you can only, you can only have an STR on a parcel with an ADU. If it's owner occupied, and, and maybe that, maybe that's something that should be in the STR ordinance, not the ADU ordinance.
Yeah, so maybe we'll hold that and talk about that as part of the STR or ordinance, then we can come back and align the two, if it makes sense. Um, so I don't know if we did, did, uh, Richard, did you get your question? So occupancy, the point number one, we're, that, that stays as is?
No, I'm sorry, uh, if you're asking me, uh, I'll, I'll wait to see how we kind of play both the STR and the ADU ordinance together.
Okay, okay, all right. Yeah, I was just asking you, because you asked that question.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on to slope stability. Any comments on that?
I just had a question on the, the life safety, the sprinkler, the fire sprinkler piece, and I just want to confirm, Trevor, that. If I build a brand-new ADU on my property, I cannot be required by law. To input fire sprinklers, and I'm just, I'm, I'm rested with the life safety piece of that, given my line of work. Of why in the world you would have new construction not require, uh, fire sprinklers?
We, we were required, so it took me to our house, so it.
But, but the way I'm reading this, and again, going back to that handbook. Right? We can't, can we even require them in new construction ADU? Not if it's designated as an ADU?
So, no, so only if it's a, so only if it's attached. And the primary residence is not required to have sprinklers. That you can't require than the attached ADU to have sprinklers. But I believe with, um. For detached ADUs, they have to meet all current building codes.
But the way P two reads, except that fire sprinklers shall not be required for the ADU if they were not required for the primary residence, that's specific to detached.
Yeah, you're right. Is that, and did you look at the state law? That's from the state law, right?
I don't know, I'm just, I just have that handbook in front of me. Which is not clear for.
I will look at that, and, and maybe that's a good question for Ross to.
Okay.
Building official.
Yeah, that would be good. I thought they had to have that for the new one, so.
That, that's just my only comment on the fire sprinklers, just I think any opportunity to add that in shouldn't be missed.
Thank you. It's very important. We're on, uh, uh, the last page here. Any comments on anything, but especially about some of the questions that Trevor had? Diane?
Well, you know, back to Aaron's about the sprinklers. So sprinklers aren't required, but solar panels are for new, um, new construction ADUs, so. I don't know if we can write that in there, but it seems like they should be required, sprinklers. If we're gonna make them get solar panels, too. Okay, that's all I have on that page.
Yeah, I was fine with the coastal resource protection. Um, one, two, and three. Yeah, uh, doesn't look like anybody has any, any other thoughts on that, so. I think that.
Yeah, and I, I might, I, I might move R into the. A, a higher section on location, it might, we'll, we'll see when we put the ordinance together where it makes sense, um. And. Yeah, and then I'm thinking something like, you know, um, not meeting standards A through. You know, something like HI, J, K, somewhere around there. Those are standards that you could. Get exceptions to through approval of a use permit if they came through you, but then all the rest of them, utilities, onsite wastewater, accessibility. Building code, those things you cannot get exceptions for, um, so that might be a way to break, break that down.
Yeah. That sounds good. All right, last call for any parting comments. On that, Diane has a, has a comment.
So Trevor, once we get this, um, figured out and you write it. Maybe make a simple list for the building department and yourself and Gabe. That says, you know, sixteen feet sprinklers, solar panels, parking, I mean, just something so that when they come in. And they want to do the ADUs, we just have some basic, okay, these are the guidelines for you.
Yeah, and I think Ri- Richard made a similar request at the beginning of, of the meeting, so, and, and he'd actually like to see that, I think, to help. You guys and the council also make their decisions.
Well, and then what's gonna happen is it's gonna go through Gabe and our new assistant. So if they have a checklist and, and Ross, it's gonna be easier to get on with this, um, housing requirement. Okay.
All right, we are, uh, ready to shift gears to talk about the STRs. Um, do you guys want a five-minute break, or do you want to just plow ahead? Five-minute break? Okay. All right, let's take five, we'll resume at seven forty-eight-ish. All right, everybody back? Yes. Diane is, uh. Gone for another minute or so? Alrighty then, a subject that is near and dear to our heart. Short-term rental or not. Trevor, do you want to? Diane's our chief commissioner on STR committee, so Trevor, if you don't mind kicking us off with the staff report, and then I'll ask Diane if she has anything to add.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, you know, I think I've given you quite a bit of background on, on the other ordinance. I think, you know, my, my perspective, primarily where I'm coming from is, you know, a lot of work was, and thought was put, and research was put into this ordinance, and it does seem to be working for, for most of the community. And so, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of other things on our plate, and I'm afraid that if we change things too much, reducing caps, different things, that, you know, the coastal commission is going to ask us for more analysis that'll take time away from general plan and, and things like that. So, but yeah, I, I think there is, is some, some wiggle room in there. You know, I, I did provide some additional background information. Something, you know, I, I think that adding or changing caps, you know, should be based on some sound reasoning and, and data, and so that's, you know, that's where I was sort of coming from in terms of if we, if we have that justification, you know, already, and we can give it to the plan and to the, to the coastal commission, you know, and try and limit, you know, how, how much work this is going to take on the part of staff. So I provided some ba, more background on caps. I, I had a good conversation with, with Eli today, and, you know, he did point out, a lot of communities have, you know, caps on STRs that are less than 15%. That's, that's for, for sure. I do believe that 15% was based on some smaller coastal communities, more, more like Trinidad, so not necessarily a, a standard. There are other ways to, to look at, at caps. There are other ways to limit STRs, the impacts from STRs. You know, a couple ideas include, you know, additional restrictions on the number of licenses someone can own. You know, I, I do like that idea because, again, that prevents these from becoming just, you know, investments, someone just buying up all the properties and turning them into vacation rentals. You know, at, some additional proximity restrictions are another option. I did, I did provide, you know, some, some potential numbers as a starting point. It's just, you know, for, for discussion purposes. You know, I, I think Eli had a good suggestion. You know, the UR zone and, and, you know, Dick Bruce alluded to that in his letter as well, that the UR zone is really kind of the, the heart of, of the Trinidad community and where the closer neighborhoods are and where impacts are more, and that's where the impacts have been. So maybe there is justification for, for reducing that, that number some more. But then in the SR zone, just because there's not a waitlist, doesn't, there have been more, I, I believe there were seven or eight. I, I could be wrong, but I think there have been more STRs in the SR zone, and because those properties are bigger, they're more spread out. They don't necessarily have as many impacts on neighbors, so you know, a, a bigger decrease in, in the licenses in the UR zone could be accompanied by an increase in the allowance in the SR zone. You know, I think, I don't know if you need a cap in the PD zone and a citywide cap, or just, you know, a citywide cap would be enough. You know, I think that's up for discussion. I think really the, the loose end is, is on the complaints and, and enforcement, and that's kind of been the, the major topic of discussion, and some of it is just, you know, enforcement of a lot of the, the issues that come up with STRs are are difficult to deal with. You know, fines and how to collect fines has been a big point of discussion. Eli has talked with the, the city attorney and he, he will get some, you know, we'll, we'll send the ordinance to him for review and, and get some additional input from him on, on where on where we could improve the ordinance. So you know, his, his opinion was that really it should be the managers that collects the, the, any fines and that, you know, even if they have insurance or you know, they don't usually do security deposits. Well, you know, if that's the rule in Trinidad, they'll have to figure out a way to, to do that, and, you know, they collect a a, maybe it's called a, a behavior deposit. And, you know, and so they, and if there are complaints or issues, then, then that fine is collected by the managers and, and given to the city. So I think that's something we, we still need to work out. There, there have been some other suggestions for, for the ordinance. You know, exceptions, a, as far as I know, there's only one in existence that has a parking exception. And, and I believe that property is going to go for sale soon. That's one of the ones on Ocean Avenue. And so you know, we, we, there will then be no more exceptions, and the new ordinance only allows existing exceptions to continue, and that's just the parking exception. It doesn't allow any new exceptions. I don't think anything needs to be done there. Prohibiting STRs and multifamily housing, that might be a way to, to protect housing. But you do. It is currently limited to one per property, so then you'd need a use permit to add any into multifamily housing, and none have been proposed so far. So again, I'm not sure that's something that really warrants a change in the ordinance. Defining bed and breakfast, I think that would be good in the zoning ordinance, but this ordinance doesn't really deal with that, so I'm not sure it's ne- necessary. And then allowing only resident STRs would effectively eliminate them because there aren't any of those, even though the ordinance allows them. So you know, that's not recommended at this point. And then I did expand the restriction on the number of STRs that you can have, so I did use track changes and, and made a few changes to the ordinance, so I added the definition of, of meet and greet to, to Dick's comment in, in his letter, and I know that's come up. It has been a recommendation at the STR committee. My take on it was that it doesn't need to be a change in the ordinance. The city can just change the brochure and the good neighbor contract. But it could be added to the definition, so you know. So it's number six on page two. You know, it says, "In particular, the contracts shall include provisions for maximum occupancy and visitors' off-street parking noise standard," and well, it does say penalties for violations, so it's really already in there. So I think all we need to do is just add that to the brochure. I don't, I don't think that the ordinance really needs to be changed, but I don't, I, I, it wouldn't hurt anything to add it either. And then, so sections on page, on page seven, that's where the caps are referred to. So so I put in some language, but I highlighted the numbers so that you can, you know, talk about those numbers. I added, you know, some language for a cap in the PD zone as well as, you know, all within city limits, so you know, one or the other, or both of those. For discussion, I, I crossed off that the proximity is, is only in the UR zone. You know, again, I don't, I think that should be discussed. You know, does it matter if, if two STRs are next to each other in the PD zone? You know, those are, those have some commercial uses, maybe it doesn't matter. So I don't know if that's needed, but it was, I put it in there for discussion. And then I clarified for section H in terms of number of licenses, so you can only have one in the UR SR zone, unless no one else wants one. And, but you can't, and then I added that you can't have more than two licenses, period, citywide. Otherwise, I think it just, you know, that's too much of a it's just too much, I think, one, one person and, and, you know, making it more of a, an investment and not, you know, part of the community. And then I added, since we have addition, definition of meet and greet, I used the term in that section on page nine, so you will conduct a meet and greet instead of, you know, just meeting at least one occupant, so. And I think those are the only changes I have at this point, so I just looking for feedback.
All right. So, um, this one, I think we can just kind of go around. I'd like, I guess Commissioner Stockton, maybe you have something to add, and then maybe we can just kind of do a discussion about caps, and then if there's anything else that people wanted to bring forward.
So do you want my report from the meeting, or wait till after we talk about?
We can do that in the commissioner reports. We get that part of the agenda, Diane, but if there's anything on this that you want to point out.
Well, they did talk, they did talk about caps and zones, but no big no, just, you know, the meet and greet, and Trevor, did the meet and greet get explained to the city council, and do they have a reaction?
Uh, this hasn't been to the city council yet. Um, you know, the, the STR committee did give their report to the city council, so they heard that last December. But the ordinance hasn't been to the city council yet.
Okay, so nothing on the meet and greet definition. Okay.
Just, just what they heard in that joint meeting we had where they, they, I think they presented it to the city council, Diane. Okay. Diane, if I could add. Daze, go ahead, Eli.
Yeah, regarding the meet and greet definition, Trevor did a real good job with that. The only thing that I would add is where it says, "Meet and greet means an in-person onsite meeting at the STR between the property manager," and I would add, "or owner" and the responsible person, because there's a number of STRs that are not represented by a property manager.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. All right, other, let me just open it up then to comments or questions. We can just kind of take turns and and maybe we can land on the cap. Diane, you're up.
Okay, so I, I want to tell Trevor that she did a really good job presenting the staff report and writing up the STR ordinance standards, you know, outlining it, and basically, the committee, when we met at the end of June, they think everything's fine. They're happy with the STRs. They think the community's happy. And you know, they just want to know when we're going to talk about it, and I called Gabe today and called Richard, Dick Bruce, but I didn't, I didn't get ahold of anybody, you know, being out of town. But I think, you know, pretty much the, the caps, you know, I'd like to feed the property owner or, you know, the property manager. And I don't know, I think, you know, they're, like it says here, they are a visitor's service. And then when Trevor brought up about the bed and breakfast definition, I think that would be good, but I don't know. They aren't an STR. So let's just define them as what they are, a hotel. Let's see, I'll just look and see right through here if I, what else I oh, just the transient use. Do, if somebody is in a transient use with an S. So it says transient use means any contractual use of a structure thereof or residential for sleeping purposes.
What, what page is that, Diane?
That's page four of 15.
Thank you.
So I think we talked about that for
You're, you're cutting out, Diane, sorry. So did you did you say you wanted to change that, the transient use?
No, 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 I just wondered if they, if they registered with the city, if they were doing a transient use of an STR.
Is that the bed and breakfast, you mean?
No, not the bed and breakfast, just an STR. I'm over the bed and breakfast.
Okay, um, yeah, so the STRs, through the STR licensing process, they have to have a license and pay the transient occupancy tax, so. So yeah, so that's all the licenses. Need that.
So you know, you, you mentioned Mr. Bruce, Diane. I, I did just get, we got a letter right before the meeting from him that he asked to be read into the record. So I was originally planning to do that as part of the public comments, but maybe I should, since it's Dick that's telling it versus just a general public comment. Should I, should we go ahead and read that into the record now so that we can hear his feedback, or what do you guys think? Is then Dick on the, he's on the STR committee, right, Diane?
He, yeah, he, he's the chairman of the STR committee, and I didn't read the letter. It's probably on my email, but you know, it was a pretty tight day for me.
Yeah, all right, I, I'm going to go ahead and read this really quick, or try to read it quickly, so he just said he's unable to attend tonight's meeting. But he asked that this be read into the record. He's the chair of the STR advisory committee, and he'd like to make the following comments. They're on his own, and they do not represent, nor should they be construed to be recommendations from the committee. Now that I've read that, I probably should have put it in public comments, but we're just going to plow ahead here. After reviewing the ordinance as currently written, I would make the following observations. Enforcement of the ordinance is probably the most widely discussed complaint about issue in both the public comment to the STR committee and private discussions among Trinidad residents. The committee asked the city manager to get an opinion from the city attorney who's, uh, who should be responsible for payment of fines resulting from violations of the ordinance. I believe the attorney advised that violation occurring within or on an STR property, the property manager should be responsible. It's my opinion that in order to make this work, the property manager should collect a security deposit that would be used to pay fines imposed by the city. Security departments already referenced in section 1756.190. Under transmittal of rules and good neighbor contract, occupants can be fined by the city, lose their security department, and/or be evicted. This deposit can be either a set amount, perhaps 500, or equivalent to one night's rental fee. It would be fully refundable violation per. Some property managers will tell you that since they offer insurance policies for damages, that they do not have the ability to do this. My response is that if the ordinance requires a separate deposit to cover potential violations, then the property managers will have to start requiring them, just like hotels do when they take your credit card information upon check-in. Please consider incorporating this change as an amendment to the ordinance and defining security deposit in section 17.56.190. So that was his first. So that was his first, uh, recommendation. Second was the good neighbor contract brochure should be revised to follow the committee's recommendation in the annual twenty twenty report to quote unquote, add general language to the good neighbor contract brochure under good neighbor guidance about the two hundred minimum fine for violation of general rules of conduct. And the city council should add specific language to the contract for each new rule, excuse me, each rule regarding the two hundred minimum fine while also requiring guests to initial each rule an acknowledgement. Uh, this would mean the contract brochure would list two hundred minimum fine, uh, next to each rule. And the guests would initial their acknowledgement of each rule during the newly defined meet and greet. All right. So I think we talked about that. And then finally, the city manager and planner have both provided you with ideas and suggestions regarding caps on both number of STRs in individual zones. It's my opinion that although the majority of STRs are currently located in the UR zone, they are not or that they are the most appropriate in, uh, both C and PD zones. The UR zone is where the neighborhoods of the city are located. It's a zone where most of the past complaints have come from. I would suggest a citywide cap of no more than thirty-two and a max of eighteen in the UR zone and no cap in either PD or C. Should there be an increase in the number of STRs in both the C and PD zones, that would cause the total number of citywide STRs to exceed thirty-two, then the UR zone would be closed. Any new permits and attrition through sales or non-renewals in the UR zone would eventually uh, get the number down to thirty-two citywide. So I hope that made sense to you guys. It's basically saying thirty-two max, eighteen in the UR zone and no cap in PD or C, and then through attrition, reducing the UR zone cap. So all right, I probably should have shared that. I apologize. While I was speaking, I should have shared it on my screen. But hopefully you had it in your email and you could kind of follow along. All right. So with that, uh, let's continue on with thoughts and feedback. I mean, I mean, I guess I'm going to ask one question, um, that's related to caps. I was a little confused. So we have an existing cap of nineteen in the UR zone. But if I understood it correctly, there were also six that were resident STRs, right? So a total of twenty-five. And it made me wonder if when we're thinking about caps, do we not include resident STRs in the caps? Um, do we have a different cap for resident STRs? You know, I wasn't sure how we were thinking about that.
No, I think that's open for discussion. Um, I just, there, I think there's been two or three STRs in the past that have, that may have qualified as resident STR. So that's where, um, you know, a homeowner lives in the home for the majority of the year and rents it out for not more than sixty days. Um, so for example, they, they leave for a couple of months in the summer and rent it out. Um, so, you know, and, and that would provide a visitor serving use during the peak time potentially. Um, doesn't necessarily provide the same kind of T O T benefits. Um, currently there are two separate caps, but there are no resident STR licenses in the city. So there doesn't seem to be much demand for those. Um, another type of STR that's allowed is the home share STR where, um, you can rent a, a room in your house. And, and that is not included in, in the cap.
Okay. So maybe, so was I mistaken then? There are not, there are no, in the UR zone, there aren't, there are not six resident STR licenses right now, or there are?
There are not. There are none.
There are not. Oh, sorry. Okay. I missed, I misread that then.
There, there is a cap of six in the ordinance, but there are no existing.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thanks for clearing that up. Well, so how do you guys feel about Trevor's recommended caps? And that's, and then, uh, I think that's mainly what we need to talk about. I would say it's on page seven.
Uh, can I ask a question for clarification? On page three of four of your report, Trevor, the, uh, let's see, it's the paragraph that says complaints enforcement. I know you asked Cheryl about caps, but I just want to clarify something here. The last, the last sentence says, I am not proposing any changes to the ordinance, but will be looking for additional guidance from the city manager and city attorney for the next iteration. I, I didn't understand if you meant that the next revision of this version, or were you referring that you were going to get additional, uh, advice for a future revision in the, uh, for the future?
I, I was hoping to get some input for this revision, but just, and, and then hopefully for the next meeting, you know, I can give you an ordinance that has the caps and whatever other changes you want tonight. And then, um, any suggestions from the city attorney for enforcement? And then may, maybe that's, maybe that's it.
So then I'll just follow up on, on the, the issue of the caps. I think we're actually at a kind of a sweet spot with respect to his caps. In that it seems to be, uh, working fairly well. Uh, I really like the work that the STR committee has put into this. And I know that they've spent a lot of time hashing out a lot of these details. And so I really appreciate all the work that they've put into it. I do though, like the idea that was suggested by Dick Bruce where, um, he would like to see a little bit of a shift out of the UR zone into other zones. I think that is a reasonable thing to do. And I think reducing his cap by basically one, uh, is a reasonable, uh, request. Um, I was a little confused by your comment though Diane, that the STR committee was happy with the caps as they are now. So could you clarify that?
Okay. Um, they thought that, you know, mostly, you know, there wasn't uh, violations, there weren't complaints filed against them. And, um, you know, it seemed that they, they just seemed to be happy with, with how, um, the STRs were in the city. Um, you know, and the meet and greet, they, they wrote that and understood that. Um, you know, they wanted in the brochure. Um, let me look over my last note here. You know, the main complaint I think is who's going to collect the money if there's a violation? That was what they would battle back and forth. Let's see. But they did talk about, um, STR standards violations need to be dirty. That's what Dick talked about when Cheryl was reading that letter. I just picked it up on my, um, email. Yeah, they, they seem to be, you know, happy with, with how it's going in the community and the ordinance. I mean, they weren't really, I think the, the main thing I said is just how do you collect if there is a violation? You know, they, and you know, two of them on the committee are property owners and managers. And it was a big deal for them to collect it, but it is a business, you know, some, um, person in one of the committee's, uh, meetings commented on that it's a business and that's your business. And so it's your job. And our attorney said the city can't collect it, that the property owners have. I think that's their main, the main battle or not really battled, but talked about caps. And I think Eli and Trevor, and you probably, Richard haven't figured out about caps. You know, I just don't want it to go over thirty-five or thirty-four, you know? Just leave it at, at that number, because that's why we started the whole STR ordinance was because of the number. Okay. Did I answer Richard for you?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Um, I, I had reviewed the, the minutes from your other meetings and, and, and I think you're right on in terms of, uh, the, the feelings of the, of the other members. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Eli? Did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to it. Uh, currently the committee's composed of four members. We're short one member. Uh, Dick Bruce is the only, uh, public member and we're supposed to have two public members. Uh, so, you know, basically he has echoed a concern of trying to delve too much into the STR ordinance, uh, without having, uh, a balance of the one planning commissioner Diane, and then two property owners slash, uh, property managers. And then two, uh, who are, uh, non-property owners and non-managers. Uh, so, so that's, that was a comment that was made. So, so as a result, they didn't delve too much into uh, talking about the numbers and so on.
Oh, okay. Well, so, I mean, it sounds like we're comfortable with the meet and greet. It sounds like we've landed on the property owners collecting. We've landed on, I believe, and we've landed on, um, putting, uh, I guess the dollar amount in the brochure. No, it's not in the brochure. The dollar amount would be in the packet that the owner, it was a relationship between the owner or property manager. That's what, that's what I'm hearing. You guys correct me if I'm wrong. And then there's, I think the cap on the table is whether we stay with the thirty-four that's in the document right now versus the thirty-two, for example, um, that, that Dick was recommending. Um, I believe it would reduce it by two because I think it's thirty-four in here.
Just real quick, I'll correct, um, there's, there is no citywide cap. So the only caps are nineteen in the UR zone and six in the SR zone.
All right. Okay. So I'm looking at the page seven. So.
I think what we're proposing is a citywide cap and/or a cap in the PD zone.
Right. Exactly. So, so in the center of page seven, I think the rec, the, the current, um, how can I say this? The draft ordinance right now says thirty-four as a cap citywide. We currently have that. So I, I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Oh, yes. But that's, yeah, and I just put that number in there as a starting point for discussion because I, I just wanted to put something in there.
Okay. So that is proposed. It's not the current ordinance that I, I may have misspoke when I said that. Go ahead, Eli.
Yeah, I, I did want to comment also the fact that I've been city manager since March twenty nineteen. And since then, we haven't had any more than thirty-one, uh, STRs. Uh, and, and like Trevor is saying, there was no maximum STR. And she's mentioning in there, uh, possibly having one between like thirty to thirty-four. Uh, Dick suggested thirty-two. Uh, but, but yeah, we, we never have gone over thirty-one. So I'm, I'm leaning towards the, you know, the lower number of, of thirty or thirty-one, uh, or even the thirty-two.
Yeah. So I, I think that sounds like what we talked about last time. So unless, unless anybody has any heartburn, but what, why don't we, how about we reduce it to thirty-two? And make it a citywide cap. Does anybody have a different proposal? That seems like the, one of the citizens recommending it who's also on the committee. Uh, Eli is comfortable with thirty, thirty-one. So thirty-two is even a little bit better, but it also, and then I guess the question is, do we put a cap? Do we take off the caps in the PD and C zone? Cause I think that was his other ask, right?
There is no cap in the PD and C.
Oh, there's none now?
Right.
Okay. Pardon me. Then, then we leave that as is. All right. Uh, going once, any objections to that? Parting comments? Commissioner Hakinen?
Not to that. I have a couple of other points.
Okay. Yes, definitely. Why don't you go ahead and, since I see no objections to what I just said, why don't you go ahead and?
Um, just minor, and it may have been mentioned, but, uh, I know we keep referring to property manager, but, uh, to Eli's point, there are a number that are owner managed. So cleaning up the language so that it says property owner or manager as appropriate or something along those lines. Um, and then the other thing, and I don't know that this needs to be in the ordinance, um, because I agree, it seems the ordinance seems to be working, but you know, the, the meetings I've attended since I joined the community and, and since I joined the planning commission, uh, you know, centered around the complaint process. And, you know, I, I mentioned closing the loop last time. So I'd like to see uh, something clarified for the complaint process where not only if I have a complaint, I call the contact person, but I also inform the city. That way those two pieces of the puzzle couldn't, can come back together. And I, again, I don't know that necessarily needs to be in the ordinance per se, but I think that would be an important step in, I don't know, perhaps restoring some confidence for some folks in, in the process.
Yeah. So that's a really good point, Aaron. You reminded me because I was thinking maybe the, and Diane, maybe it's something the STR committee takes up. I don't know. But I guess the question I always have is if it's a self-reported process from the property manager and the owner to the city, in other words, I get this call. Uh, I've got a neighbor who's angry and I'm the property manager or owner. Um, and I handle it, but I'm also supposed to report it to the city. There's no incentive for me to do that. So I, that's what I think we have to get to is like, why would, how, how do we incentivize the property manager or the owner to do that? Because it's not in their best interest to have, uh, you know, a, a, a number of complaints, if you will, on file with the city. Do you see what I mean? So maybe there's some creative, I don't know what it is, but it, it would be something maybe to ask the property owners um, or managers in your group, like how, how can we incentivize you to do it?
So we did talk about that.
Oh, you did?
In the meeting. Yeah. The owner, the property owners, um, Jan and Joe talked about it and, um, you know, they need the property manager to tell them, and then it needs to go into the city. Angela might have something in some minutes, you know, because we did, we did talk about that at the meeting. And they, they think that's, you know, that should, should happen.
Yeah, I just, I just don't know. It's almost like the honors.
Well, and they haven't had complaints. They have, they've gone through a couple of years without complaints. So they're not going to beat that around the bush because they, they, they will report it. And Angela or, you know, not Angela now, but Gabe can record it. And then if need be, um, they'll take Eli might have another angle on that.
Yeah, I, I was, I was thinking, you know, basically if we make it clear to the owners and property managers, uh, that number one, we would like to hear about the complaints and the resolution of the complaints. Because every complaint I have heard of has always been resolved, uh, you know, and, and the parties were satisfied. And, and as long as that happens, then there's no mark against them. Just because someone complained doesn't mean that, you know, that that goes negative against the property. Uh, the resolution of that complaint, it could possibly be an extra plus, you know, just saying that, you know, you handled it well. Uh, I know in one case, when I first began, there was a complaint and, uh, within, uh, you know, like basically twenty minutes, the property manager was there addressing it, uh, within like forty minutes, it was all resolved. And, and the neighbor even commented and complimented the quick response.
Okay. Well, so maybe it's not an issue then. I mean, it sounds like we're not getting that many complaints.
To get them to all report because I have a feeling there are some other complaints like that. And because they, you know, they take care of them, they think, well, gee, it's not really a complaint because, you know, I took care of it. I mean, sometimes it could be as minor as like an alarm going off or something. But I think anything that happens, they should let us know, just so we know if there's some consistent pattern that maybe could be addressed in a different way by the city.
Maybe we need like a short-term rental of the year, you know, trophy or something. I don't know. Go ahead, Aaron.
Well, I guess my, my question kind of. Well, I guess my question kind of, I would almost say, as it is right now, asking them to self-report is fine, but put the onus on whoever's lodging the complaint to also, when they do that, to notify the city as well. Just as a check and a balance, and that cleans it up.
Yeah.
And that way, I don't know.
That was gonna be my suggestion. I know, you know, there's been some pushback and saying, well, you know, it shouldn't be on the victim to have to do anything. So, but, but, but really, how else? You know, there's really not another good mechanism. I think what we could do is encourage the complaining party to let the city know. And then maybe the incentive is that, you know, the property manager not informing the city could be considered a violation. You know, maybe not, we have a list of significant violations. I don't think it would be a significant violation, but we could note that, you know, them not informing the city about resolved complaints could be considered a violation so that if the complaining party does let the city know, and we find out that they didn't report it, it could potentially be a violation. So that might be an incentive for them to then start reporting it more.
I'm just looking at the way, you know, the folks I've heard voicing concerns over the accountability, so to speak. You know, they're supposed to, you know, the ordinance says that they're supposed to report any complaint to the city. I mean, that's how the ordinance reads, regardless of whether or not it's significant or not. So, you know, have them add that check and balance in for the city so that way it's there. I don't know. Richard, I saw you had.
Well, I was just gonna say that early on, we put together a little, I'll call it a decision matrix again. And that was an attempt to try to close the loop, if you will, from both ends. Now, I don't have it in front of me, but it certainly, we could take a look at that and see if there's any way that we can adjust it so that we can incentivize the all parties, whoever is involved, to close the loop with the city, because that was one of the real concerns that we had early on, that that wasn't going to happen. So we put that little flow diagram together, and maybe we should dust it off and see if it's still makes any sense, and if it can be modified to incentivize or improve the process, by all means, we should do it.
And could that then be attached to the annual letter to the residents that are within three hundred feet, saying, hey, you know, just to remind them, here's step A, step B?
Yeah, I mean.
Put that tool in there.
It was intended to be a public tool. I just, I don't think we just maybe utilize it as effectively as maybe we could have, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, you know, as we also get our, you know, systems in place in the city, as we can become more web-based and, you know, upgrade our software and so forth, if that can ever happen, if we ever get enough money to do that, and, you know, personnel, we could have a system where people could just log it online, and, you know, it's all tracked, and there's a handshake, and an email goes out to the the property owner or manager. That would be really cool. I know that's my vision. Technology. All right. Any parting comments then on the STR ordinance? I think we've covered it. Tom, did you get a chance to say everything you wanted to say since you're on the phone?
Yeah, I think it sounds good. And yeah, I would say the same about the web base, but that's, it seems like it's working. Nice work, everybody.
Yeah, great job. Thank you to the STR committee. Eli, did you have something you wanted to add?
Mention the fact that in both the draft that Trevor prepared and also Dick Bruce's comments, they both suggested reducing the UR zone from nineteen to eighteen.
Okay. Does anybody have a heartburn with that? You don't? Yeah, I think, okay. All right, that's good.
So just to, oh, sorry, Richard, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, that was kind of what I was saying earlier, that I think it shows good faith in trying to reduce very slowly, but reduce the impact in UR zone and moving it to other zones, and by all means, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that, so what we've got is eighteen in the UR zone cap. We're gonna leave the SR zone cap at six. We are not going to add a PD zone cap, but we are going to add a cap of thirty-two citywide. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, and I do want to, oh, go ahead, Diane, and then I'm gonna open up to public comments just in case.
I want Trevor to repeat what she just said, please. Thanks.
Yeah, so, so a cap of eighteen in the UR zone, so that's reduced by one. We're gonna leave the existing cap of six in the SR zone the same. We are not going to add a cap in the PD zone. And then, and there are no caps in any other zones, but there will be a citywide cap of thirty-two.
Eli? Did you want to add to that? You're on mute. You're so muted.
I'm sorry. Okay. When Trevor and I had our conversation this afternoon, we were talking about by reducing in the UR zone, that we could possibly increase in the SR zone. Even though we only have five right now and the cap is currently six, it just seemed like that's an area that, you know, because it's less congested, larger properties, that maybe we could be encouraging that along with the commercial and the plan development to try to take the load a little bit off of the UR zone. So possibly increasing that one to seven. So we'd reduce one and increase the other by one and see how it plays out. And in addition to that, I did mention to Trevor that the ordinance itself said that it should have been reviewed in two years, and it hasn't. So now we're doing this official review. But beyond that, it says, you know, as needed. So I'm seeing it basically, maybe every year, we just sort of like, take a quick look. Is everything fine, fine? You know, maybe we could tweak the numbers, so maybe in the future, we, you know, change one, drop it by a number, increase the other one by a number, and then continue on the future years.
Okay, I think that's a good, good suggestion. Anyone have any problem with the seven in the SR? I don't either. Okay. All right, thank you, Eli. That makes good sense. And now I will open to public comments. This is regarding the short-term rental ordinance. If there are any public comments, just go ahead and state your name and tell us your thoughts. You don't even have to state your name if you don't want to. Just tell us your thoughts. All right, I see no public comments, so I'm gonna bring this back to the commission. And it is time for Commissioner to report. So I'll start with you, Diane. If you have anything you wanted to share about the STR committee?
One more quick, just specific. I, I think, I think I'm pretty happy with the, you know, licensing limitations. I don't think there were any comments on the proximity. So for section, on page seven, under location, subsection G, do you want to expand the prox, so that no STRs can abut another STR? You know, I, I do wonder, you know, how much good that does. Because you can still be, you could have one property and still be kind of surrounded by them, so maybe it's better to have them clustered in some ways, especially in other zones. So I just, I just would like to get some direction on whether that should be amended or not.
So, go ahead, Diane. I think I've deferred to you on this one.
So your, your new STR shall be located where it shares a property boundary with a property containing another STR within the UR zone. That's what you're talking about? Yeah, I think that's important because the neighborhood is gonna talk about it. It'll, it'll be brought up in the, in the community neighborhood that they shouldn't be next to each other. That's why we started the whole ordinance.
So I think the way it's written, they can be next to each other, like in the PD zone or the.
Interrupting. Community neighborhood.
I'm sorry if I interrupted you, Diane. You were cutting out, so I thought you were done.
Oh, okay. I just, I think it should stay in there. Because, Trevor, that's what started the whole ordinance thing, was the neighborhood.
I'm not proposing taking it out. I'm just, do you want to expand that to other zones? So right now, you know, in the UR, several UR zone properties back up onto PD zone properties. So under the current ordinance, you can have an STR in the PD zone that backs up on an STR in the UR zone. With this change I've put in for discussion, again, I'm not necessarily advocating for it. I just wanted to put it in for discussion, is that in the PDs, then it would also be limited in any other zone, so. But only if it abuts a parcel in the UR zone. So, you know, two PDs can be next to each other, but they can't. You know, should they be allowed to abut on a UR STR?
No.
So Diane, in favor?
I had five in my backyard. Okay? So I'm against it.
So you would, you would agree?
I think you're gonna, you're going to cause community chatter if you get them in there. You know, I'm not against the PD, but I don't want them right next to each other. It's just, it's not.
Diane, it's gonna stay the same in the UR, but are you saying that in the PD, you want the same thing? In other zones, you want the proximity rule, or you?
Well, I think, I think we need to look, I think we need to look at it because we're a small community. And that's what, and that's why we wrote the ordinance, because there were forty-eight STRs or something like that.
Okay, yeah, but, so sorry, I'm just trying to clarify because you were cutting out a little, and I wanted to make sure we understood your position. Eli?
Okay.
Yeah, the way that it's currently written, if you do end up with the scenario that Trevor's talking about, where you possibly have one that's in the UR zone next to the one in the PD. So in other words, if there is one in the UR zone, what you could do is add it in the PRs, in the PD zone, okay? So that could be next to the STR that's in the UR zone, which would be fine because it would be STR to STR. But if you had one in the PD zone, you cannot add it in the UR zone because it's saying you can't have it next to one. So the way it's currently written, you wouldn't be able to have it if it's already in the PD and you're adding one in the UR. You would not be able to add it in the UR.
I'm just thinking. It might be, I'm gonna continue to thank Aaron.
I guess my comment would be, I kind of like the concept of if an STR shares a property boundary with another STR, regardless of the location, it's not, it can't be approved ministerially, and then it could come before us as a use permit, which is there in that next paragraph. But just looking at, you know, the map that, I'm trying to find my camera here. You know, there are some sections where, you know, UR and PD back up against each other. A couple PD, you know, two, three PD parcels are back fences with a couple UR parcels and, you know, a blanket approach where you could have PD, 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 you know, STRs in theory. I think we would want to look into that and decide on that on a case-by-case basis if that's something we wanted to approve. So I guess I would suggest that we have, you know, prohibition against the boundaries touching unless otherwise approved through a use permit that comes before the commission, which will give the public a chance to comment and noticing and all that kind of stuff to really kind of find out if it is an issue or not.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I think that's how it's, basically how it's currently written with the amendment. So in any zone, if it abuts another STR in the UR zone, you would have to get a use permit.
I'm saying abutting in any zone, against any.
Okay.
Simply because, I mean, the town's so small that different zones abut different zones.
So then I would cross out, so in addition to crossing out within the US UR zone at the, early in the sentence that's crossed out now, I would also cross out the within the UR zone at the end of that sentence.
That would be my suggestion, yeah. And then if somebody wants to look for something different that just comes before us, and, you know, case by case. I don't know, you know, I hear the point to clumping them, but I also, the character, you know, one street would become, you know, essentially an STR street if we were to allow that. So I just, or a particular zone, so I kind of like the idea of spreading them out a little bit, too.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Diane?
Yeah, because Aaron, before you came here, we did have an STR street. So that's why we need to protect this, and I like your idea of the use permit, and we need to look at it. We need to make sure it doesn't slip by Gabe. And Eli, you need to be on that so that we can, you know, preserve the character of Trinidad.
Does that work? Does that work? Okay, all right.
Just, just one comment, and unfortunately, I don't have my map in front of me like Aaron does. But since we're talking smaller zones, when we talk PD and other zones, I think we should just confirm or just do a sanity check that if we agree to this clause, that it's not gonna put us in a bind with what could possibly be some locations in other zones adjacent to the UR. And I don't know that it is a problem. I just, I just want to make sure that we're not backing ourselves into a corner that we can't, we can't get out of.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with what has been proposed, and if Trevor or someone else wants to take a look at, just to make sure that there's no conflicts, then fine.
Yeah, it looks like it's mainly PD zone, right? That would be abutting the UR zone.
Mostly, yes.
A couple visitor services. SE, that doesn't matter, opens, yeah.
And there is, there is an application for one, a new STR in that. It's sort of next to eight, the number eighteen, if you have the map in front of me. That would be PD, and it wouldn't be affected by this. Yeah, it really, and this would, this would only apply to new STRs, so the existing ones could continue. It's just you wouldn't allow new ones. And like you said, if someone wants one, they can apply for a use permit for that. So.
Yeah. So one thing, I guess, so I guess we grandfather in the one, so for suburban residential, for example, so we have the Hunt property next to it, the Growth House. I guess the Growth House actually sold, so it's no longer a short-term rental. And then I don't know if there's another one on the other side. So I was just trying to think about it, you know, like, for example, in my suburban residential, we don't really, except for two or three houses that are all together, we don't really see each other very much. You know what I mean? We're pretty spread out. But, yeah, so I was just thinking, would that impact them? And I don't think it does.
No, but that's a good point. We could accept the, because, you know, that's sort of the, you know, we were talking about in the SR zone, they don't impact neighbors as much. So maybe we exempt the SR zone from that limitation.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. What do you guys? I mean, there aren't that many SR properties. There's only, it looks like, what, two across the freeway and then that few up here. I can't imagine it really being a problem.
You have the whole area up there off of Frontage Road going back in the period.
Where is that, Richard?
So the Berry Road.
Oh, right, right. So maybe they, maybe they would prefer not to have, maybe we leave it as that, you know, because they can always come to us. I was just thinking. I was just thinking, Eli, um. If it would impact current short-term rentals that were in the S R zone. I don't think it does. Eli?
Yeah. If, if you're done with this, I, I do want to remind you guys, because you were talking about the A D Us. And you said, once we get to the S T Rs, we're gonna talk about the A D Us. So. I just want to remind you.
Thank you, yeah, so it was.
The reasons, because I have that particular issue in front of me right now.
Yeah. I'm still gonna try, still gonna try to get it. We're not gonna make it, but I'm gonna try to get us out of here by nine, so. Um, I was at a four-hour water advisory committee meeting last week, as was Eli and a few others, um, anyway, so I'm trying to be, be brief, so I don't get. The feedback that.
Did I jump in for a second?
Alright.
Could I jump in for a second?
Yes, please, yes.
Um, I think, I think the S T R rules are going to uh look fine for the A D Us. And I'm really pleased with how the S T Rs rules are putting together, it sounds like a lot of good neighborly product going on, and um, and with that, I have to leave, I'm sorry to say.
No worries.
And so, hey, anyway, thank you all, and have a nice evening.
You too, thanks for joining. Um, okay, so A D U S T R, so I guess the question is. Whether or not the A D U could be used as an S T R if it has a license. I, I thought it should just fall under the same rules. And so to me. But then, I also thought, well, the whole point of an A D U. Is to provide more low-income housing, so if we rent it out as an S T R, it's no longer low, not low-income housing, but you know, I mean, like more, more housing. Low-income is the wrong word, but affordable housing.
I think what I was thinking is. You know, but on the other hand. Having. An S T R on the property could make living in the, one of the units more affordable for someone. Um, so, I mean, so could having a rental, um, or an S T R. And having, so, and so, and having the owner on site of, of an S T R could be advantageous, so what I was kind of thinking is maybe. Only allowing S T Rs on parcels with A D Us. If, if the, if one of the units is owner occupied. And I don't know whether that would go in the A D U ordinance or the S T R ordinance.
Say that again, Trevor.
So you could only, you could only have an S T R on a parcel with an A D U. If one of the units is owner occupied.
Well, that becomes a resident S T R.
No, 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 because the, a resident S T R can only be rented out sixty days a year, and the owner doesn't have to be on site. You might be thinking about a home share S T R, which you rent out a, a bedroom, but not more than one bedroom in your house. That's really a little, a little different too.
Uh, yeah, you're, you're correct.
So, and, you know, um, we don't have to deal with that now, we actually. When we propose the A D U ordinance. If we think that should be in the S T R ordinance, we could propose another amendment to the S T R ordinance at that time, and just do those two together, because we're going to be amending other sections of the zoning ordinance, so we could. We don't have to do that now with the S, I think it might kind of complicate the S T R amendment at this time, so let's maybe wait. For the A D U ordinance. But keep in mind, it might also end up being a, a change in the S T R ordinance as well at that time.
Okay? Everybody okay with that? Alright, I don't see anybody shaking their head, so I think we're okay. Alright. I think that's, we'll have an opportunity one more round on the S T R ordinance before we finalize it, I believe. Um, and if you have any comments, you can always send them to Trevor, so I'm, I'm gonna move on to commissioner reports. Diane, did you have anything left you wanted to say about the S T R committee? Think we lost Diane for a second. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and do a brief report then about the, while we're waiting um on the water committee, and that is that we had the water committee last week, good four-hour meeting. We decided to pass through to the city uh council some recommendations to apply for grants for leak repairs, for new water tanks. And also to review the uh timeline uh for feasibility work. How can I say this? There was a letter from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. That uh if we wanted to get on the bandwagon, we needed to get, you know, we needed to put in um our request for feasibility by, in August, like mid-August. And so the uh committee agreed to uh just expose that deadline to the city council, so that they would know there was a deadline. And then uh more work uh was being done on water sourcing, things like trucked-in water, trying to figure out if we had to truck in water, how much would it cost? And water catchment, we talked about water catchment, it was actually in my report, but I've separated it out, now we're gonna do it separately, and then uh subsequent to the meeting. Uh Supervisor Madrone uh provided a write-up on kind of his uh, uh ideas around uh spring water. As a source of water. I think there's a name for that, but I can't think of it right now, that's it. So that's what we did, Diane, did you want to add anything on the S T R committee? No? You're on mute, sorry, you're on mute. We had a little.
I, I pretty much covered. All of it, and um, you know, over the time that we talked about. Yeah, and then Dick covered a couple other, other things. And um. Yeah, I don't have anything else, we, we will meet in um. I think it's the first week in October now, and then we're gonna work on the annual report. For the December meeting. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports?
Just very brief, Trails Committee met last night, um, the interpretive sign on Trinidad Head that's uh, you know, partway up the, the very beginning section. Uh, the language on that, there's some concern over that between various groups, so that's being taken to the city council level, there's been a request for a government-to-government meeting on that. Um, and then uh the Trails Committee is looking at some uniform signage, getting that going for the trails and markers. And Eli, correct if I'm wrong, but uh the actual Lindgren Trail is gonna be kind of a focus of the first kind of place to, to kind of attack. Um, maintenance work on, and that also is gonna be coming through the uh, the management group, as well as the city as well, to try and proceed forward with that on the tow and the handrail and that kind of stuff, so.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, staff report, Trevor, anything you wanna? Keep it surprised on?
Um. I still have several pending applications, I was hoping to get at least one on, on this um agenda, but um. It looks like we. Well. Still hard to say, um, how many will be on the August agenda? Um, if, if, if the regular agenda starts filling up with permit applications, I might suggest a special meeting to talk about. S T Rs and A D Us. So just um. Keep that in mind as we move forward, so we can keep, you know, keep, keep the permits moving, but also keep these other priorities moving along as well.
Okay, is that it? Alright, thank you. Um, now we can talk about some future agenda items, are there? Agenda items that folks would like, we have the Tsunami, Tsunami Siren update on here for a while. Uh, what's even C S D Interta, I think that's gonna be discussed at the water committee. So I think we can probably, if Richard's comfortable with that, Richard, I think you put that on there, maybe we can take that one off, um, and, and delegate it to the water committee. And then T M P incorporation of the G P, I honestly can't remember what T M P is at this point, but.
That is the Chirai Management Plan, so. You know, I, I want to relook at that, I, and I have looked at that in the past, I think um. Right now, I'm kind of waiting for the, the city's consultation um policies to be in place, and then I would like to. Um, try and get back to meeting with the tribes on the cultural resources element, and in particular of the general plan, but, you know, other parts of the general plan they want to talk about um as well, but starting with that. Cultural resources element, um, I would like to get moving on again. So that's, that's my vision for getting that done.
Okay. Anything else that anybody wants to, um, so I noticed uh we have a member of the public that has joined, and I was just on private chat with her, asking if she wanted to make a comment. Let's, I'm just gonna fini- okay, one second, so I'm just gonna finish um with the commissioners on this, Paula, and then I'll, I'll open up public comments real quick, so you can add your thoughts. Diane? You wanted to add something on?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Aaron and Trevor and maybe Eli about the uh site where the lighthouse was originally. Is that T M P, is that Chirai?
No, so that little square where the lighthouse was is not part, I mean, it's certainly adjacent to the management plan. Uh, or the management to the. Chirai Study Area, Chirai Management Area, twelve and a half acres, um, however it's being referred to. But it is not. The, the Chirai Management Plan is specific to the twelve and a half acres that um the Coastal Conservancy. Gave to the city of Trinidad, and that parcel is not part of that.
Okay, so. Something needs to be done down there, a couple benches, a little, you know, cleaning up, because the tourists have been there all summer. And then, you know, without a bench or, you know, a space, um, they're along the bluff, and, you know, that's been eroding. So I just wondered, you know, if the Trails Committee could take that on, or is that the Civic Club? Or do we go back and talk to Ally Lindgren that wanted to do a peace park? I mean, what, what can we do?
Um, I'm gonna ask that we, so what, let's, how can I say this, so we, it's not agendized for this group, but to Diane's point, we can ask who should talk about it, so.
Well, I didn't know if it was part of the trail.
I know.
The whole area, yeah, because.
I know, I don't, I don't mean to be nitpicky, I'm just trying to.
Okay, well, let's put it, let's put it on the agenda, what about that space? What can we do with the space?
If Trevor has a quick answer for.
Who's in charge of it?
On it, then I, I think it might be complicated, but will Trevor, is that a quick one, or?
Yeah, there are no quick answers, um.
That's what I thought.
I don't think I'd put it on as a future, I think incorporation of the T M P kind of covers it. Um, really, the, the, when that retaining or when the fence and the stairs were put in, that was appealed to the Coastal Commission, twelve, now maybe it's thirteen years ago, and that is still pending before the Coastal Commission, so. I, you know, I, I don't think they can really do anything with it until that's resolved. Um, so I think that's where that stands.
I mean, I agree with Diane, for what it's worth, that it's, it's, something needs to be done, it's, it's just, there's, you know. So, so we'll table that for now, if it comes up at the Trail Committee, maybe it's something that they can start to, or at the city staff. Uh, we could bring it up as an item from the floor at the city council meeting, that, if anybody's attending the next city council meeting, that would be a good place as well, so Diane, I share your concern, I just wanted to make sure we followed the. The rules, our little, our little round rules or whatever, Roberts rules.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, um, I'm gonna open to public comments, because we have a member of the public now, and I don't think she had a chance to speak earlier, Paula, did you want to? Say that, I'll consider those items from the floor, because it'll be, so we may or may not respond, depending on whether it pertains to the agenda, but anyway, go ahead. You're on, you're on mute, sorry. There you go.
Okay. Um. For future items of discussion. Um, I missed your meeting, obviously, of the A D Us, um, spaced out on it. Um, for future reference, there has been occasional talk of um integrating the sphere of influence within uh city boundaries. And. The A D U ordinance. As written, may not um serve the needs of people in the sphere of influence. And that may interfere with the people in the sphere of influence. Um, wanting to enter the um. City of Trinidad boundaries, I just wanted to mention that, being the owner of a non-conforming A D U.
Okay.
Okay, and uh I misspoke at the water committee meeting when you suggested um. Outreach to the public, and uh I said it was too late as far as that issue. I should have said, that's an excellent idea, make a motion that you've pushed that forward. Because it's my understanding that if that was done, there was some slight possibility that um. The fa- the next. Um. Council meeting could push a letter forward, it would, it would take, everything takes so much time, and. The train is leaving the sa- station, so to speak, as far as the water issues, so probably at this time it's too late, and I think you've read my letter. Um, giving an outline, I hope, of a past, okay, so. I'm actually, well, I, I don't want to take up any more time, I know you've been here a long time, and I'll send you an email.
Okay, alright, that sounds good, alright, I understand. I understand, they're very, very complex issues and a lot of moving parts, so thank you for joining us. Um, and uh, yeah, apologize if we didn't get to your comment sooner, so. Alright, um, I think we're actually at the end of our meeting, uh unless there's any, anything else anybody wants to add, okay, alright. In that case, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting, thank you everyone. And we'll talk soon.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.